Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It's just after two o'clock on Monday, March the 19th. And ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest under Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Okay, seeing none, we have a first item on the agenda. We have a presentation related to our land's business case and the preliminary results report. So I'd also want to acknowledge that we have a number of members from the Economic Development Task Force here because of that. So they're, they're here. And this, we've gone through a lot of different sessions over the, over the last year. And they've been very much with us every step of the way. And we talked about this last time at the Economic Development Task Force. And one of the things that Council Kitres indicated is that it really makes sense for us to take a good part of our meeting at the next committee of the whole. Just to bring other members of council up to speed on what some of the discussions that we had been having at the Economic Development Task Force. Make sure that we weren't rushing into everything, anything here and make sure that we're all on the same page when we move ahead with this. So thanks, members of the committee for being here. With that, I will turn it over to, who's going to speak to this first? Right away, Jamie? Okay. So I'll call Jamie from Watson to come and speak. Welcome, Jamie. Just put the red, yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of council, staff and committee and anybody else in the public. So today we're here to present the preliminary findings of our municipal development business case for industrial development in the municipality of Centre Wellington. Focusing on the Ferguson, Alora employment areas. So we're going to, I'm going to walk you through about a 45 minute presentation. I'll try to be fairly succinct and, and walk through it relatively swiftly. And we'll leave questions for the end. This is a preliminary findings report. We're not going to get into all the findings of the, of the analysis today. We want to give you a first sort of overall review of the preliminary market findings. And then based on that information, I'm anticipating I'll probably be back to talk to you in more detail with respect to the, the economic and financial analysis. So the outline of the presentation, we'll go through the study purpose. Want to provide a little bit of an overview of the planning policy context at the provincial, county and local level. Then we'll present the overview of the case for municipal industrial development within, or employment lands development within Centre Wellington. Then we'll go through the preliminary findings of the industrial market analysis, starting with a review of macroeconomic growth trends. Overview of Centre Wellington's competitive position, a brief overview of the cost competitiveness analysis that we did. As well as a long-term overview of employment land needs and market capture for Centre Wellington with the broader market, within, within the broader market area. And then follow up with conclusions and recommendations. So with respect to the purpose, we were retained by the township in 2017 to undertake a business case analysis, which explores the municipal development of various, various sites within the existing future and future industrial business park areas within Ferguson, Alora. Prior to finalizing this business case analysis, market assessment analysis has been provided to you. And I'll be presenting that today, which overview's the competitive position of Centre Wellington relative to the surrounding market area in terms of overall cost of development and non-residential development potential. So I wanted to just take a few minutes to provide a brief overview of the provincial policy context and the county provincial policy context that we're dealing with. And how that relates to anticipated market demand and employment potential within Centre Wellington. So the first thing I want to just update you on is we have a, as you, as you know, we have a provincial growth plan, places to grow. That plan was updated in July of 2017, and it provides the direction for growth within the Greater Golden Horseshoe at the upper tier and single tier level to 2041. It also provides growth allocations, both population and employment for each of those upper tier and single three municipalities, including Wellington County. It looks at a, or projects a long-term population forecast of 140,000 people in Wellington County and 61,000 jobs by 2041. Now if we move now down to the county level, what I really want to stress here is this is significant amount of growth that's been allocated to Wellington County over that long-term planning horizon. And what you see further from this table here is that a significant amount of, of that population employment growth is being concentrated within Centre Wellington. And that's primarily because of a number of factors. One is that there's significant land and servicing constraints in a number of the other municipalities within South Wellington County, including Puslinch. You've got servicing and land supply constraints in the township of Erin, capacity, servicing capacity strengths in Guelph, Hermosa. And then in the north you have less issues with constraints, but more issues with anticipated market demand over the long term. Those areas are further removed from the primary market areas within the Greater Golden Horseshoe and, and Greater Toronto area. And generally have less overall demand potential for growth. And so what that's doing is it's funneling, are concentrating a lot of that growth pressure within Centre Wellington. As you can see here in this table, historically, if you look at the table in 2016, historically Wellington County represented about 31% of population and about 30% of employment within the county. Going forward to 2041, that percentage is anticipated to increase to 37% by 2041 for population and employment. That's an incremental increase of over 51% population and 52% jobs. So over half of all the jobs and people that are projected for Wellington County are anticipated to be allocated to Centre Wellington. And that's adopted in the Wellington County official play out, the plan, and it's been approved through OPA in 99, 98. So wanted to also mention and discuss this issue about employment lands and why are they important? So when we're talking about employment lands, we're essentially talking about the industrial areas within Centre Wellington. Those are the areas that are designated in purple or gray in the official plan. Traditionally, they've been, they've been referred to as industrial areas. Generally now we're referring these areas as employment areas because they accommodate more than just industrial development. They accommodate also certain sectors in the commercial office sector. And to a lesser extent, employment supportive uses and personal service and, and the ancillary retail sector. They form an integral component of the city's, sorry, of the township's economic structure and local development potential. And that's primarily because they accommodate the majority of the township's export-based employment sectors. So sectors in manufacturing, wholesale trade, construction, and as I mentioned to a lesser extent, small-scale office are all accommodated within industrial areas or employment areas. So they're very vital to the overall economic development potential of the township. There's also other benefits to accommodating growth on employment lands. Generally, employment lands provide strong economic multipliers or spin-off employment. Typically, the multiplier in the manufacturing sector is over, is over two. So for every one direct employment job in the manufacturing sector, it generates another two indirect jobs within supporting sectors, both locally and more regionally. Typically, employment lands provide high-quality employment opportunities. They contribute to the township's assessment base, and they generally provide net fiscal benefits to the, to the municipality as well. So this map here provides an overview of where those employment lands are that I mentioned. So those are the areas that are in blue in Ferguson, as well as the future employment area in gray in South Ferguson, as well as the blue employment areas identified in Alora. So with respect to the amount of land that's designated for employment lands development, currently the, the township has a total of 256 hectares of lands that are designated within, within the township. About 153 of those hectares are identified and designated within Ferguson. 86 hectares are designated in Alora, and there's another 17 hectares designated in Salem. When we look over on the left, you can see the primary issue is that while we have a significant amount, relatively significant amount of designated lands, about two-thirds of those lands are already developed. Currently, only about 31%, or sorry, 33% in total are vacant. And only about 2% of those lands, as you can see in green, are actually serviced and vacant today. So the bottom line is this, the, the township has a very limited amount of shovel-let-ready serviced employment land. Only six vacant hectares at the moment, or if you work in acres, that's about 15 acres of, of land. This map and slide here just provides a bit of a further breakdown geographically of where those vacant parcels are located. Also breaks it down between Alora and Ferguson and Salem. You can see there's very limited amount of land in both Ferguson and Alora that's vacant and serviced. About roughly about four hectares of land in Ferguson and about two hectares of land in Alora. There's also some brownfield lands that are also serviced, total of about 12 hectares and about four hectares of unserviced land. And so this table here just provides a further breakdown for you in tabular format, identifying that current land supply situation. So again, six hectares of serviced greenfield land, about 12 hectares of brownfield land for a total of 18 hectares. 79 hectares of unserviced greenfield land, about four hectares of unserviced brownfield land for a total of 83 total unserviced hectares. So that's a total of 85 hectares of greenfield land plus serviced and unserviced, it's vacant, and about 17 hectares of brownfield land. So essentially what that tells is there's a very minimal amount of serviced employment land. And even when we look at the amount of designated employment land, there's not enough land, both serviced or unserviced, or even designated to accommodate short-term, medium-term and long-term demand within, within Centre Wellington over the long term. So I want to move on to exploring the, the business case for municipal land development within Centre Wellington. So this bar chart here provides a, a bar chart that looks at the continuum or spectrum of land development within a conceptual approach to land development within Ontario. And what it shows us is the, the overall cost of development and moving up that spectrum, it shows where there's typically more development interests from the private sector and where development interest is usually more oriented towards municipal development. And what you see here is that sort of magic number here is about $150,000 per acre, right in the middle of that bar chart. So when we look at land acquisition costs, add servicing costs to that land, and then factor in a return on investment. Typically, on average, we're looking at an overall land value for serviced land of about $150,000 an acre for a private developer to return, a reasonable return on investment. Under that threshold, it gets very difficult factoring in land acquisition costs and servicing costs for a private sector developer to, to make money in developing industrial land. And that's one of the primary reasons why you don't see a significant amount of private sector interests in Centre Wellington at the moment, because industrial land values are below that $150,000 threshold. They're somewhere around that $100,000 per acre threshold. When we look at other areas closer to the GTA, places like Milton, for example, they're averaging around $700,000 per acre for serviced industrial land. And we get, when we get further into the GTA and places primarily surrounding the Pierce International Airport and places like Mississauga, Vaughan and Markham, industrial land prices are over a million dollars an acre on average in those areas. And so in those areas, we see almost 100% private sector development interest when it comes to developing employment lands. So there's a number of opportunities and challenges with respect to municipal land development when it comes to industrial lands or employment lands. When we look at the opportunities, a number of the opportunities revolve around more control when it comes to development. There's a higher degree of development control when it comes to urban design and development standards under a municipal development framework. There's also a higher degree of control over the timing or phasing of development and servicing. Bringing more land on under a municipal development scenario also adds to more market choice when it comes to industrial land parcels by location, size, zoning, configuration. There's more opportunity for local municipalities to market those lands or work collaboratively with private sector to market industrial lands. There can also be potential access to senior government programs to help service and, and develop investment-ready industrial lands and provide costs for pre-screening for development requirements. And also clearly it adds to the overall availability of, of, of both developed and vacant land within the, with the township's inventory. The key financial challenge or the key challenge is really the financial commitment and potential project risks. There's a significant amount of upfront costs that's involved when looking at a municipal development scenario. And those costs largely revolve around upfront land acquisition costs and servicing costs with respect to hard services. And so these are, are costs that have to be, you know, comprehensively explored and reviewed before one can make an appropriate and educated decision about whether there is a business case for a municipal development scenario within Centre Wellington. So I wanted to switch gears a little bit and talk a little bit with some of the macroeconomic and local industrial market trends. And so these are the broader and more regional trends than getting into the local trends that we've explored to help understand what the overall market potential is within Centre Wellington for industrial development. So I wanted to start off at, at the broad level. So we're going to, we're going to zoom out to the provincial level. This is a graph here that looks at gross domestic product or GDP within Ontario and Canada. And what you can see here is in the, in the black bar, you have the overall candidate average GDP going back from 2006 to, to 2019 forecasted. And then we have the Ontario GDP in, in light blue. And what you see here is that we had relatively strong GDP levels, both in Canada and Ontario prior to 2008. Then the financial crisis hit in 2008. We had a major downturn both nationally and, and provincially. And that downturn, as you, as you all know, was experienced on a global scale. We had negative GDP over that 2009 period. Then we had a relatively quick recovery in 2010. But we started to see a continued slowdown in, in economic growth post 2010. A lot of that was due to strong dollar, as you may recall back in those times, had negative impacts on the export market. We had a fairly significant decline in manufacturing growth over that time period. But in, in Ontario, you can see that we gradually started to see a rebound in, in those GDP figures. And in fact, starting in, in 2017, we're actually now starting to see growth that's either comparable or in excess of the average for, for Canada as a whole. And so the general outlook for, for growth is relatively positive in that sort of 2% to 2.5% GDP growth rate. So that gives us some broader indication of where the market may be heading overall at a provincial level. Also just wanted to just spend a little bit of time talking about provincial trends at a sub-sector level. And what this graph here is, what it shows us is the overall change in employment by sector over the last decade from 2006 to 16. And what you can see here at the bottom is that the manufacturing sector took a fairly significant downturn over that time period. We lost about 165,000 plus jobs over that time period. Most of those jobs aren't coming back. Most of them have been either lost automation, offshore competition. There's been some recapturing of some of that manufacturing growth. But most of the job growth that's being recaptured now in manufacturing is, in addition to some of that rebound, is growth in more automated and advanced manufacturing sectors. We're actually now seeing the manufacturing sector starting to show some signs of life again. We saw bottoming out of the manufacturing sector around 2010. Its decline was occurring far, or well before the 2008 economic downturn. We saw the major decline in manufacturing occurring in 2003, but even prior to that, there was signs of cracks in the, in the foundation in that, in this, in this sector. But as I said, we are now seeing a stabilization in manufacturing and in some cases even a little bit of growth in the manufacturing sector moving forward. We've also seen fairly strong growth in other, in some other industrial sectors, construction being one of them. It's the fourth one from the, from the top. Wholesale trade and transportation and storage have also been key growth sectors in, in the industrial sector. What you notice here though as well is that there's been significant growth in both the, the service sector and knowledge-based economy. And so sectors like healthcare and social assistance is the leader in terms of overall job growth. Accommodation, food, services and retail have also seen strong growth. And so, and there's also other knowledge-based sectors like professional scientific and technical services, which is the fifth down on the, on the list. And other knowledge-based sectors like finance, insurance, information and culture, for example, have also shown fairly, fairly strong signs of growth. And so what we're seeing is a shift from the goods-producing sector to more service-producing sectors. That also has implications on how we plan for employment lands within, within Wellington County and Centre Wellington. We do anticipate we will see demand for some other forms of development other than just industrial development on employment lands, primarily in some of those knowledge-based sectors, largely in multi-tenant commercial development and also employment supportive sectors like ancillary retail and personal service uses. Also just want to stress that while the manufacturing sector did take a fairly big hit over the last 10 years, it's still very vital to the overall provincial economy. In terms of jobs, it's still the third biggest sector within the provincial economy. And jobs is only one way to measure the overall economic importance of the manufacturing sector. When we look at the GDP potential and spin-off opportunities associated with manufacturing, it clearly becomes a very significant sector to still plan for and accommodate. Also wanted to now just focus a little bit on how growth is occurring and expected to grow within the Greater Golden Horseshoe and some of the implications that has on planning for, for development in Centre Wellington and, and more broadly in the county. So this graph here shows the overall growth potential for the Greater Golden Horseshoe to 2041. It shows that by, from 2011 to 2041, the population in the Greater Golden Horseshoe is anticipated to increase by about 4.5 million people. If we look at that on, on an annual average, that works out to an average of about almost 150,000 people per year. And so when you look at it in that context, it's like adding the city of Guelph to the Greater Golden Horseshoe on an annual basis, year over year. That's the projected amount of population growth we're expected to have. And when we look at employment growth, we're also anticipated to add another 1.8 million employees to the base of 4.5 million. And that works out to about 60,000 jobs annually to, to the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So it's a significant amount of growth. We're, we're not the fastest-growing municipality in North America, but we are definitely, or city region, I should say, but we're definitely one of the faster, if not the fastest-growing larger city region within the Great Lakes region of North America. And so obviously that's a significant amount of growth to plan for over the long term. We did a study a few years ago that looked at how the growth is changing geographically within the Greater Golden Horseshoe. This was a study we did for the Greater Toronto Mayor's Alliance in the countryside municipalities of, of the GTA. And what this map shows is the Greater Golden Horseshoe highlighted there in, in, in the sort of yellow color. Within the, within this map, we have the core, what we call the core GTA municipalities. These are the larger municipalities that are primarily urban, identified in brown. And then the, what we call the countryside municipalities that are identified in green. And what this analysis showed is that not only are we seeing significant growth within the Greater Golden Horseshoe, but we're seeing a change in the geographic distribution of that growth within this area. And so while the province, while the provincial policies are designed to encourage more intensification and compact development within the urban cores of the GTA, even with those policies in place, we've still seen an outward, we've, a significant amount of outward growth pressure to that countryside area and then beyond into what we call the Greater Golden Horseshoe outer ring. And if you look at the distribution of population from 2001 to 11, about 67% of the, the growth was occurring within the GTH core. In the next 10 years, that rate of growth or shares particularly declines about 52%. And then by 21 to 31, down to about 49%. And looking in contrast to the countryside, the, the amount of growth is anticipated to shift from a share of 14% from 01 to 11 to about 23% looking at the final period in 21 to 20, to 31. And then looking at the countries, or the outer ring of the, the GGH, the percentage growth is also anticipated to increase from 19% from 01 to 11, to 26% from 11 to 21, and 21 to 31% over the 21 to 31 period. So just want to give you another illustration of how, not only how much significant growth we're anticipating to accommodate within the Greater Golden Horseshoe, but also how that growth has been occurring geographically and how it's anticipated to, to be accommodated within the, the next 15 years from now. So again, that has major implications on how we plan for development within Wellington County. And then when we look at Wellington County's share of that growth, relative to the other countryside municipalities, Wellington County's population's second highest, only to Simcoe County. A little bit slower with respect to employment, but there's this, they're one of the higher, in terms of rate of growth, one of the higher-growing municipalities or counties within the GGH. So as part of this analysis, we also did a municipal comparator analysis. And I want to walk you through the results of that analysis through the next few slides. And so as part of that analysis, not only did we look at Centre Wellington, we also looked at a number of comparator municipalities that surround Centre Wellington. We looked at both smaller-scale municipalities with more comparable populations in places like Wellington North, North Perth, Orangeville and Stratford and Woolwich. We also looked at some of the larger urban municipalities that directly surround or proximity to Centre Wellington, including Guelph, Waterloo, Kitchener and Cambridge. So this graph here provides a analysis of service employment land prices within those comparator municipalities. You can see here that, uh, the larger urban centers, uh, Waterloo, Guelph, Cambridge, Kitchener all have, um, average employment land values, um, in the, uh, two hundred and, there's, um, seventy thousand range to, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand dollar range. So for, for these municipalities, um, as I mentioned before, given their land prices, there's, um, largely, um, most of these lands are being developed, um, through private sector development. Uh, there's still some, uh, municipal development, um, uh, or lands being developed, um, through municipal development in these areas as well, like the city of Cambridge. Um, and then when we look at, uh, the other smaller municipalities, industrial land prices range from about two hundred and fifteen thousand down to about twenty-five thousand, uh, per acre. Um, when we look at Orangeville, Woolwich, uh, Stratford, uh, North Perth and Wellington North. And then you can see highlighted is, um, well, uh, Centre Wellington with an average of eighty-three thousand per acre. Uh, those lands, um, are being looked at further by the, uh, the township as part of, uh, this work, um, through, uh, um, uh, an engagement with a property appraiser. And, uh, we will have further information coming out of that analysis shortly. Uh, also wanted to, uh, provide you a summary of absorption rates within, um, Centre Wellington and the comparable municipalities that, uh, that I mentioned. As you can see, most of the absorption has been occurring in those larger urban, uh, municipalities of Cambridge, Guelph, Kitchener and Waterloo. Uh, then you can see that, um, the rate of absorption drops off considerably, um, in the smaller municipalities. But Centre Wellington is leading that overall, uh, rate, uh, of about, uh, twenty-four hectares of land absorbed, uh, over that, uh, ten-year time period. But as I mentioned, the, um, and we'll get to this in a few later slides, the, the, the township is, um, now running out of service industrial land. So what we've seen in the last few years is that overall average rate of absorption has come down significantly because there's just really no more land right now that's serviced to market, um, new development to. We also looked at what types of sectors are being absorbed, uh, on employment lands. And we looked at that difference between some of the larger municipalities in the comparator analysis and the smaller municipalities. And what we found is that there's a real range of development sectors that are being absorbed on, uh, employment lands. And again, going back to the, the changing and evolution of, of, uh, employment lands within, uh, Southern Ontario. And you can see here that, um, there really is a, a broad mix of, uh, of employment sectors or development types, ranging from, uh, the largest being, uh, multi-tenant industrial developments at, at thirty-three percent. Warehousing distribution at twenty-three percent. Typically, this sector, um, is very land extensive. So, uh, you've got very large-scale developments in larger municipalities, uh, that take up, uh, large tracts of land, relatively low coverage, um, and generally low, uh, employment densities. So they're not generally adding a lot of employment growth to the municipality, but they're, um, adding to land absorption. They're also contributing to, uh, the industrial assessment base. Um, and they're integral and, and, and important to the overall economy. But important to note that, um, they're not necessarily desirable from, from a employment density perspective or purely just a jobs creation perspective. Uh, multi-tenant major office, um, development. Um, so this is a standalone office greater than twenty thousand square feet. Uh, it's comprised of twenty percent of the overall development. And then manufacturing here only at thirteen percent of the overall development range. Um, and then we have a few other, um, smaller sectors as well. Oops. When we look at the smaller municipalities, those that have a population of less than fifty thousand, the, uh, the absorption characteristics were quite a bit different. We found that, um, the significant overwhelming, uh, percentage of absorption by sector was in the manufacturing sector at sixty-two percent. Um, followed by, uh, warehousing, distribution, transportation at twelve percent. And then commercial non-office development at nine percent. Uh, and then a few other sectors related to construction, office, multi-tenant industrial development. And so there's still a large focus, as you can see, on the, on the manufacturing sector in these smaller municipalities. Um, and we do expect that, that trend to continue, um, over the, uh, the medium to long-term period. So we also looked at the amount of shovel-ready employment land supply, vacant supply within the comparator municipalities relative to Centre Wellington. So as I, um, previously mentioned, Centre Wellington has a total of six hectares of land. And that's highlighted there in the third to last municipality, uh, a very minimal amount of supply. Uh, however, many of the municipalities that surround, um, Centre Wellington or that were included in the comparison analysis, um, the smaller municipalities also have a, a very, uh, limited amount of service employment lands as well. Um, except for Stratford, uh, Stratford has a supply of about eighty-eight hectares of, uh, service and industrial land. Uh, Guelph, you can see as a, as the largest amount of supply relative to the, uh, other areas that we surveyed at two hundred and seventy-five hectares, followed by, uh, by, by Cambridge, then Stratford, Kitchener and Waterloo. So what we did, um, to further, um, assess the overall need for, uh, employment lands development within this broader market area is we looked at the overall amount of potential, uh, demand or future absorption over the, um, two thousand and six, seventeen to two thousand and thirty-one period. And we compared that with the supply of land within, um, those municipalities that we, uh, that we reviewed. And what we found is that there is, um, generally, um, a, a reasonable amount of, of, uh, designated and, and, uh, and serviced industrial, shovel-ready industrial land within the, the short term, about, uh, a hundred and two hectares of land. Um, and over the longer time period, there still is a relatively significant amount of land of about, um, ninety-six hectares of surplus over that, uh, two thousand and thirty-one period. Um, however, that doesn't take into account, um, the potential for, um, you know, some larger-scale development activity that could occur within the, uh, logistics sector, for example. Um, it doesn't account for some of the vacant lands, uh, or designated sites that may not be readily serviceable or available in the long term. Um, and so it's a relatively, uh, even though there's a small surplus, it's a relatively tight market from our assessment, uh, looking at that broader, that broader market area. So further to that analysis, we also, uh, undertook a, um, more detailed development costs competitiveness assessment of, uh, development within, uh, Se- uh, Centre Wellington and, uh, looking at a number of those comparative municipalities. We wanted to get a sense of the overall cost of development, um, both capital and operating costs. And looking at those costs over a longer-term, uh, development time period of around, uh, twenty years. And so we looked at construction costs, both hard and soft costs, cost of land, development charges. Uh, we added provision for develop, developer profit. Uh, on the operating side, we looked at, um, property taxes, uh, measured over a, a long-term stream. We looked at average assessment per square foot, uh, utility costs, water and wastewater rates and overall, uh, consumption assumptions as well. And we found this is a good assessment to just get a baseline for the average development costs within these municipalities and how Centre Wellington compared to those areas. Um, and that assessment is, uh, baseline assessment we thought was useful in case through the, uh, further work that we do as part of this analysis, looking at those development inputs, whether it's development charges or property taxes, we can get a sense of how those, any changes to those inputs might affect the overall cost, uh, competitiveness of, uh, Centre Wellington moving forward. So as part of this analysis, we looked at a number of prototypical developments, uh, including a sixty thousand square foot manufacturing facility, twenty thousand square foot distribution and logistics facility, a twelve thousand square foot industrial shop or warehouse, uh, and a thirty thousand square foot industrial, uh, multi-tenant industrial condominium building. And within those, uh, set, those, um, parameters, we also assumed assumptions on, um, coverage or what we call force-based index, um, to assess the overall amount of land that would be developed within those, uh, prototypical developments. And so what we found is that, um, overwhelmingly for all the development, uh, scenarios that we looked at, whether it was, uh, ma- a sixty thousand square foot manufacturing building or a twenty thousand square foot distribution warehouse building, the, uh, the overwhelming, uh, cost input is, is construction costs. Um, for the, uh, manufacturing, uh, building, it was forty percent. Uh, for the distribution warehouse facility, uh, uh, it worked out to be about, uh, fifty-five percent. Um, and then we have a range of other costs that were also explored. Property taxes, when you amortize those, those taxes over a long-term period, also, uh, generally, uh, contribute to a fairly significant amount of, uh, overall development costs. And then we have a number of other, um, smaller inputs, uh, related to utilities, um, um, water and wastewater costs, development charges, um, development, um, profit and then land costs as well. We found relatively similar characteristics as well for the other prototypical developments in the, uh, multi-tenant industrial and, uh, the small shop, uh, warehouse, uh, example as well. And so when we compare those, um, development costs to this, to the municipal comparators that we reviewed, we find that, um, currently Centre Wellington compares relatively favorably to the surrounding municipalities that were explored. Um, when it comes to the sixty thousand square foot manufacturing building, we were the second lowest in terms of the overall cost per square foot, at just over, uh, twenty dollars per square foot. Um, you can see, um, North Perth is the only municipality that we looked at that was, uh, cheaper than, uh, Centre Wellington on an overall cost of development, uh, perspective. Uh, when it comes to the, um, distribution and warehouse facility, uh, we were also, uh, competitive in that, uh, um, building typology as well with a, uh, total cost per square foot of just under thirteen dollars. Um, the highest cost being in the larger municipalities, um, Cambridge, Guelph and, and Orangeville, and the lower cost being in, uh, Stratford and, and North Perth. Um, we, um, we're generally comparable as well, um, in the, uh, multi-tenant industrial, uh, development scenario as well. Uh, sort of middle of the range, uh, about, uh, just under thirteen dollars per square foot. Um, and for the, uh, small-scale, uh, manufacturing or, um, um, industrial shop, we were also comparable, uh, in that space as well, at just under ten dollars per, per square foot. So in summary, uh, we found, looking at that comparison, that development costs are, um, higher in Centre Wellington. Generally, when we compared them to, um, North Perth and Stratford, and that's largely due to lowered, lower or lower development charge costs within North Perth and Stratford. So lower industrial development charges or a, um, uh, uh, exemption to industrial development, uh, charges is providing a bit of an edge for those two municipalities. Um, we also found that due to higher land costs, um, and development charges, um, the urban centers of Orangeville, um, Woolwich, um, um, were higher. Um, um, and, uh, we also found that, um, Wellington, or Centre Wellington was competitive with respect to development costs, um, compared to most of these municipalities due to lower industrial land values, uh, moderate development charges and building permit rates. In terms of operating costs, uh, we found that Centre Wellington operated, um, at a slightly higher, um, operating cost, uh, relative to North Perth and Stratford. Um, the competitive position, uh, with respect to the comparators was, uh, relatively positive with, with respect to property taxes. But we did find that water and wastewater costs in Centre Wellington, uh, were providing, um, slightly higher costs in the manufacturing development scenario due to higher volume consumption rates in Centre Wellington compared to some of the other municipalities that we looked at. Um, so that did provide for a, a slightly higher overall, uh, cost competitiveness, um, in that, in that, uh, uh, sector. So I wanted now to move into local development characteristics, uh, within Centre Wellington and just to provide you a bit more feedback on what we, uh, found, um, with respect to the local market. So this graph here provides a summary of building permit activity within Centre Wellington over the last ten years uh, on employment lands. And so you can see here that, um, over that time period, the, um, municipality averaged about ninety-one thousand square feet of non-residential development, uh, per year. Um, so just under a hundred thousand square feet. Um, and sorry, this is, um, this is not just on employment lands, this is all of the, uh, development within, within Centre Wellington. Just under half of that development activity occurred on those employment lands that, that we mentioned, those areas that are designated in blue in the official plan. Highway, uh, highway commercial, uh, also accommodated about thirty-four percent, so just over a third of building permit activity. Rural development, industrial development, uh, comprised nine percent. Um, other rural, four percent. And then in the central business district, four percent of development activity, uh, was comprised in that area and then two percent in the other urban areas. Um, so at a high level, um, when, when we look at the amount of urban development potential, um, on employment lands, um, you can see here that there's still overwhelmingly a large amount of, uh, industrial development activity occurring within Centre Wellington on employment lands at eighty-seven percent. Um, just, um, around four percent for commercial and nine percent in the, in the institutional sector. That still is a lot, I, I think a fair bit more the, more concentrated in the industrial sector than other, um, larger municipalities uh, that I mentioned in the, in the comparator lists in the G, GTA. Those areas would be a little more dominated by, uh, the commercial sector, largely in the multi-tenant commercial space. Um, about, um, about seventy-eight percent of the development activities occurred through expansions, so almost eighty percent and only twenty-two percent through new construction. And, uh, I think a, a big part of why that's occurring is because there's just limited, a, a limited amount of, of serviced vacant lands to accommodate new constructions. So a lot of that development activity is being accommodated through expansions of existing businesses on existing occupied lands. So this gives you a, uh, summary of the absorption, uh, rate, uh, of, uh, employment land development in Centre Wellington in the urban areas of Ferguson, Alora over the past decade. On average, the, uh, municipality's been, um, achieving about two hectares per year, about five acres per year on average. You can see there was a fair bit of development activity occurring in two thousand and fourteen, uh, and fifteen. Uh, in two thousand and sixteen, uh, that dropped down to one. And I understand that, uh, in two thousand and seventeen as well, we had, I think, um, about one hect- well, two hectares or less than an, an acre, uh, sorry, less than a hectare of, uh, additional industrial land or employment land absorbed within, uh, Centre Wellington. And so again, the lack of available shovel-ready supply is really constraining the municipality to absorb, uh, new industrial, uh, parcels, uh, in its employment areas. And that's pretty evident as you, as you can see through the, through the chart here. Um, in terms of building characteristics on the, uh, municipalities, uh, occupied employment areas, um, there's a total of about two point six million square feet of gross floor area. Um, just over half of that, uh, gross floor area is accommodated in four large manufacturing buildings of greater than sixty thousand square feet. Uh, however, I would say that, I would note that, um, over the past decade, the municipality really hasn't experienced, uh, any significant large-scale, uh, industrial development of that nature. Um, and then that's partly, well, it's largely due to the amount of land that's, that's being, uh, offered within the, the municipality. But it's also due to the, the market opportunities for, um, smaller-scale, uh, manufacturing and, and logistics and distribution opportunities within Centre Wellington rather, relative to the other, um, large-scale or larger, uh, urban municipalities that, that we reviewed. Um, and some of those, um, larger municipalities in places like, uh, in the GTA, like, like Milton, for example, that are accommodating a lot of the larger-scale, uh, industrial developments. So, um, sixty-three out of seventy-three of the industrial buildings that exist on employment lands are smaller than thirty thousand square feet. So rarely where we see, um, a lot of the market potential in Centre Wellington is, um, in the small to mid-size, um, industrial sector, um, uh, typology. Uh, and about, um, forty percent of the lots are, 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 um, larger than one hectare. Um, but, uh, again, for the most part, a lot of these, um, occupied sites are relatively, um, small to mid-sized. Um, average, um, footprint of the, um, industrial space within the, uh, township is thirty-four thousand square feet. The average floor space for workers, about eighteen hundred square feet per employee. And this is an important, these numbers at the bottom here, it's a lot of stats, but this is also important for, for us to gauge the amount of, um, employment that we would potentially accommodate, uh, if we were to develop, um, um, new industrial lands and what kind of densities we could, uh, we could achieve. Um, generally, the densities on employment lands are low. Um, they're much lower than what you would achieve in the, um, commercial retail sector. And they're also quite a bit lower than what you would. And they're also quite a bit lower than what you would typically find in the more urban, large-scale urban areas that, again, I mentioned. And a lot of that has to do with the industrial land prices and the types of development that are being accommodated in some of the more expensive locations throughout the GGH and GTA. Building coverage is about nineteen percent, so fairly low coverage on, on average. Most zoning bylaws permit up to fifty percent. Building coverage, nineteen percent's quite low. Again, showing that with the relatively lower land prices, utilization of land is relatively low in Center Wellington. I just want to provide a few examples of some of the prototypical or, or typical developments within Center Wellington. So we mentioned small-scale shops of less than twenty-five thousand square feet. Those represent about thirty percent of buildings on employment lands. They comprise about fifteen percent of the developed land area or ten percent of the GFA. And there's a few examples here, Railmaster Stairways Limited in Ferguson, H&R Machine also in Ferguson. Multi-tenant industrial buildings, they comprise about three percent of the developed area, five percent of the GFA. This is an area where we would expect to see some potential increase in the share of development activity. A few examples here are the Beckett Center. And there's also another example at six forty Guard Store Street. You can see here too, the range in density too, which is also, I think, an important characteristic to highlight, that the density on the, the left is at eighty-five jobs per hectare, density on the right is at eight jobs per hectare. Typically on average, you'd probably expect to see something in the middle of that when it comes to the multi-tenant industrial component. Small-size, mid-size manufacturing buildings ranging from twenty-five to sixty thousand square feet, they comprise about six percent of the developed area, eleven percent of the GFA. Two examples are the Cook and Denson Plant and then the Newton Industries as well. So these are some of the prototypical developments that we would expect to, we'd expect to see within Center Wellington on a go-forward basis when looking at how to plan for employment land development within, within the township. Wholesale transportation logistics is the last type of development that we looked at. Comprises about sixteen percent of the developed area, twenty-five percent of the GFA. There really isn't a lot of large-scale manufact-, or warehousing distribution development within Center Wellington, but there are a few smaller-scale developments such as the the one here at nine thirty-eight Glengarry and six fifty-five Dixon Drive. So a few more slides I wanted to just summarize for you to help paint a bit of the picture on where the demand is, has been and where it's likely heading within Center Wellington, looking at to two thousand thirty-one. So this graph here, it's an interesting-looking graph, a little hard to sometimes decipher just looking at it.
Sorry, if I can just interject for a second. Your paper copies have run out, so, but it is on the copy that we have digitally, just so everybody knows.
Sorry, so this, what this graph here shows is it shows a few things. On the, on the X-axis, it's showing the overall rate of employment growth over the last decade by sector. And then on the Y-axis, it's showing the overall concentration of, of, of growth by sector within Center Wellington relative to the provincial average. And then the spheres themselves are showing the overall magnitude of the employment sector relative to each other. And so what you can see here is, for example, when we look at the big blue one in the middle, that's the manufacturing sector. So it's showing a relatively stable or, 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 or slow growth rate, close to zero percent over that ten, ten-year period. When we look at where it's sitting in the, on the X-axis, it's at a, what we call a location quotient of about two. So it's higher than the provincial average. So what it's showing is that the industrial sector is about, has about double the concentration in Center Wellington relative to the provincial average. So we have a more concentrated sector for manufacturing in Center Wellington. So it gives us some sense of where the employment clusters are. And so where, where, where we typically see location quotients or concentrations higher than one, it gives us an indication of where we see a cluster. So we see a, a strong manufacturing cluster, a well-established industrial sector within Center Wellington. We also see other industrial sectors, it's a little hard without a pointer, but if you look at the red sphere, that's the construction sector. So while it doesn't have a high concentration relative to the provinces, it's showing strong growth at around six percent growth, six percent growth rate per, per year over that ti- ten-year time period. So one of the higher-growing sectors and the fastest-growing industrial sector. You also see below that in the sort of teal color, the transportation and warehousing sector. Again, while it's not a large sector and while it's not highly concentrated, it is showing relatively a strong growth potential. Also wanted to point out that there are a number of other strong growing sectors within Center Wellington that are outside of the, of the industrial sector. Healthcare, social assistance is the, the sphere in the, in the yellow. Has a stronger concentration, it's large, it's rapidly growing. We also see a number of service sector and knowledge-based sectors that are also showing strong growth. And so if you look at the, again, to the, to the right of this, this, of the, over to the right of this, of the, of the slide, you can see the professional, scientific, and technical services sector. Again, while it's not overly large relative to some of the other established sectors and relatively, has a relatively, relatively similar concentration relative to the provinces, it is showing strong growth at four percent. And so it's important to look at those sectors that are in those knowledge-based industries because, again, as we, as we look forward to what kinds of development are, we're trying to accommodate and plan for in industrial areas, that sector is one that may have some opportunities for, to be accommodated within, within employment areas in Center Wellington. So this graph here looks at the historical rate of absorption, I talked about it, two hectares per year. And then it looks at what the future potential of absorption is anticipated to be within Center Wellington. So based on the amount of employment growth that has been allocated to Center Wellington and the amount of employment growth that's allocated to industrial, commercial, and institutional sectors, and how much of that growth would be accommodated on employment lands, we're looking at an average absorption rate of around ten hectares per year. So about a five times increase in, with respect to what we've been seeing historically. We don't expect to see a lot of growth happening in the first few years because we just don't have any land to accommodate this growth. But this is the kind of land absorption that we potentially could achieve and what we're expected to achieve in a more unconstrained environment to accommodate the projected growth within the county official plan and, and through the township's own growth management strategy. And so right now, looking at that rate of growth, to, to, just to thirty-one and comparing that with the supply, we're anticipated to have a shortfall of about forty-eight hectares or about a hundred and twenty acres of employment lands. So even if we were to service all of the employment lands that are currently designated, including the, the future employment areas within South Ferguson, we still wouldn't have enough employment land to accommodate growth to two thousand thirty-one. So we'd still need to look at designating more land. And then the, the county and the township will still have to look beyond thirty-one because we don't stop planning just at thirty-one, we're going to continue to plan. The, the current planning horizon in the county is now forty-one. And so there'll be an ongoing need to look at where future potential opportunities may occur and should be identified to accommodate employment growth, to accommodate that deficit as well as additional growth beyond two thousand thirty-one. And so that's a study that's beyond the scope of this work. It'll be largely carried out by the county through their municipal comprehensive review work and employment land strategy. But this, this study here, I think, does provide very good background support to, to that county, that county work and then ultimately to the, to the township's own growth management review. Oops, sorry. One last slide on the demand before we get into conclusions is the overall market capture. So wanted to explore this issue of what is the overall market capture rate of, of development activity in terms of land absorption within Center Wellington compared to those surrounding municipalities that we looked at? What has it been historically and what is it anticipated to be over the future? And so historically, we've been capturing around eight percent of the total absorption within that, those surrounding municipalities that I, that I discussed. Over the next five years or so, that market capture rate's expected to drop to about one percent. And that's simply because we just don't have any lands right now to accommodate that are serviced for employment lands development. But over the longer term, we do expect that market capture rate to grow potentially to around eleven percent over the twenty-one to twenty-six period and then thirteen percent to the twenty-six to thirty-one period. But in order for that market capture rate to grow, obviously, we need serviced employment lands. So in conclusion, as you can gather from the presentation, the, the township has a very limited supply of shovel-ready employment lands. It's insufficient to accommodate the township's forecast employment land needs at thirty-one. It's extremely limited right now to accommodate almost anything. Any new development activity on, on employment lands is really challenged or constrained, given the current situation. As we mentioned, given the relatively low development feasibility associated with industrial land development in Center Wellington, there is a limited return on investment for the private sector. So we don't think it's reasonable to just sit back and wait for the private sector to, to initiate development. That likely is going to be a challenge, given the, the overall financial feasibility that I, that I summarized earlier on in the presentation. So we haven't gone through, in this presentation, a detailed analysis of the capital costs to develop these employment areas, but we know that there will be significant costs associated with developing employment land sites within Ferguson, Alora. And so as we move further through this study, we do need to explore the funding opportunities and, and mechanisms for financing the, the capital costs associated with this growth-related development. A large, our, our primary tool that could be looked, explored is development charges. But we also need to look at the town's, township's development charge, local development policy and to understand what costs are going to be expected to be financed through development charges and what costs would be considered local development costs. So the local development costs are the costs that are typically internal to the development. Those costs would normally be funded by the developer. But in this case, if the municipality was going to take on a role to explore a municipal service, servicing option, then it would take on a, a role to eith- either fund those costs outside of development charges or potentially look at setting up some other mechanism, possibly an area-specific DC could be explored in, in effort to fund those, those capital costs. But it's important to, to recognize that when we go back and look at the, the development cost competitiveness, competitiveness situation, that if we, if we impact those input costs, whether we impact taxes or we impact development charges, that's going to have an impact on how competitive the municipality is going to be relative to, to its surrounding competitors in the, in the local and regional market area. So those, those overall mechanisms of how we fund development, both capital and operating, need to be explored within that context. It's also important to recognize that there's broader economic benefits as well associated with employment lands development within the township. And so there's clearly an economic development benefit to developing employment lands or industrial lands within Center Wellington, and we, we talked about a lot of those, those benefits. And some of the obvious ones are the direct jobs that are going to be accommodated within Center Wellington as well as indirect jobs or spin-off opportunities. There's also temporary construction jobs that would be generated plus induced economic benefits from increased labor income and wealth generated locally from local employment opportunities. There's also other broader socioeconomic benefits as well related to employment lands development within Center Wellington. And so we talked about the, the concept of the export-based sector and that employment lands are primarily the, the land base to accommodate the export-based sector. And that's primarily in our manufacturing, industrial, and office market. And development of those, of that sector increases the generation of local tax assessment. It also creates a number of opportunities and benefits from a, from a socioeconomic and planning perspective. So a key objective for many municipalities, including Center Wellington, is to increase its local live-work opportunities. We want more people living and working within Center Wellington. That has benefits on reducing commuting dependency, provides also positive environmental impacts, also enhances quality of life for a number of local residents rather than getting into their cars every day and commuting into larger urban centers either in Kitchener, Waterloo, Guelph, or the West GTA. We want to offer more local development op-, or job opportunities within Center Wellington. And these, these overall goals are also well-aligned with the township and county official plan vision as well as the guiding principles of the growth plan. So moving forward, the township will need to explore and prioritize next steps towards an implementation strategy. It's recommended that the township look at specific sites where opportunities will exist to explore a municipal development scenario. We've also recommended the town to explore the development of an economic action plan focused, but not limited to the identification of targeted industry sectors, investment attraction, marketing, monitoring, reporting, as well as strategic economic development goals and implementation. And that concludes my presentation. I know that was a lot to absorb. Everyone's awake still, which is a good sign, and happy to take any questions from you at this point.
Well, thanks very much, Jamie, for that very in-depth preliminary report. I know that, bottom line, the, the challenge that Economic Development Task Force started with is we see a lot of growth when it comes to residential development in Center Wellington, and we're not seeing the corresponding growth when it comes to employment lands. So that was a basic challenge, that was a basic problem that the Economic Development Task Force initiated this project on. And so what can be done about that? I mean, I think you've, you've indicated very clearly at the end of the recommendations is that we do want to be a great place to live, we want to be a great place to work, and want to make sure that our, our assessment is balanced between residential assessment and, and employment assessment. So that is kind of the impetus towards going in this direction. So appreciate the in-depth preliminary report. Before, I'm going to turn it over to you, questions from council, but is there any, anything that councillor Kittriss or councillor Van Lewen wanted to say, because you've gone through this process for the last year and a bit? Is there anything that you want to mention about this process, anything that stands out, councillor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Watson and Jamie specifically for the presentation. When I first started as a councillor on strategic planning, I, I'd said that we needed land. That was taken off the list, and I'm very, very appreciative that through the Economic Development Committee that they, they, it was pretty much a black and white, that, that, that we needed lands, and this report verifies that. And I, I'm very pleased with the, the recommendations that are being made. I feel that, you know, further work and to come will also verify the economics of it and the sustainability, that it isn't just a, a one-shot thing that we're going to be doing here. It's, it's till two thousand forty-one, so it's a sustainable economic plan. And I feel that this is the preliminary report for that, and it verifies everything that I've been trying to push in economic development. and it verifies everything that I've been trying to push in economic development.
Yeah, again, thank you, Jamie, as well for the report. And it's, it's good for the rest of council as well to see what the committee's up to. There's a lot going on in the background that you just can't gather in a short report. So, it's good to be able to have that report come forward to see where we're going. Also, we've talked about smart growth and how we're going to move forward. This, again, is something that says we need to be active in what we're doing. We need to be proactive versus just reactive in this, in this market, especially when we see the growth numbers projected. So, I'm encouraged by it and as we continue to move forward. So, it's a good information session for council.
Thanks councillor Van Lewen. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Kelly. Thank you for the report. I think that the requirement for serviced land has been well-known for many years now. So, this is, seeing it written down with statistics is a good thing. But I do have a bunch of questions, to be honest. Number one, I guess, is you've highlighted in your presentation that the growth areas today are not manufacturing particularly, or even distribution and distribution out of Centre Wellington is probably not going to happen, you know, just because of poor access to the four oh one. But the growth is in healthcare, the growth is in high-tech. And yet, all of the examples you give are for industrial, manufacturing, buildings, and jobs per hectare, et cetera, et cetera. If you get into the healthcare, we have, we have a whole campus being developed around the new hospital. Granted, it's owned by the county, not by the township. But should we not be focusing our attention on growing employment in that area instead of, instead of large industrial buildings, which aren't happening, very honestly, very quickly, anywhere? Now, I mean, it's not just here because we don't have the land. I mean, manufacturing is not growing particularly anywhere in Ontario. So, I guess one of the things I would say is that, the very last point you make is that we have to explore the development of an economic development action plan. Maybe the action plan should be done before all of this, so that we know which direction we're going. Because I personally don't think that chasing smokestacks is the right growth strategy for Centre Wellington. We're just, we have, you've mentioned Richard Florida and creative economy in your documentation. And, and, you know, years ago, he said that quality of place is more important now for job location than building, building industrial plants or industry. Recently, we had Roger Brooks here, who was an industry consultant, basically said the same thing. People are moving because of quality of place now, not because of that's where the jobs are. They're developing, developing jobs around place versus developing place around jobs, so to speak. And so, I, my, my problem is that we seem to be jumping to the conclusions that we need to build more industrial manufacturing land development instead of the creative economy type of jobs, which, where you have a lot more employment per square foot than you do in the manufacturing industry. And, and you have an employment that's going to stick around better during a downturn in the economy. So, those are my comments.
To you, Mr. Roger, did you want me to respond to a bit of that?
Yeah, I'd like you to respond, especially to the premise behind that is, is that, that there's no growth in manufacturing and that we're not seeing an uptake on the potential for new niche manufacturing in Centre Wellington. I'd like us to, because a lot of the comments kind of were driven from that assumption. I'd just like you to, maybe you respond to that.
Sorry, Kelly, I didn't say that. I said it's not growing as quickly.
Okay, so it's not growing as quickly, if you can respond to that.
Yeah, it's, you're, great observations, great, great points. And this is really the big dilemma, the million-dollar question, you know, what are we going to accommodate? What are the, what are the growing sectors? And through the presentation, I was trying to provide a realistic picture and a balanced picture of where the economy is heading when it comes to traditional manufacturing and industrial sectors versus more emerging sectors in the knowledge-based industry. But what I also, what I think what's also important to recognize is that there's still, we are now seeing, we are seeing some growth in the manufacturing sector. The, that's, the manufacturing sector pretty much bottomed out around two thousand and ten. And since that time, we've seen moderate growth in manufacturing overall. But where we're seeing most of the potential in the manufacturing sector is more in sectors that are related to automation and advanced manufacturing, high-tech. So, I do still see opportunities in that sector. I don't think that it'll be the fastest-growing sector within the economy again. But I do expect to see some potential in sectors that are capital-intensive and technology-intensive. And we're seeing that across, across Ontario and sectors like, advanced manufacturing sectors or businesses like Lynamar in Guelph, you know, are seeing, you know, significant growth potential. So, I do think there's still an opportunity to be accommodating a portion of growth in manufacturing. And I also see across Ontario, and I've been saying this for a while now, a trend where you're seeing smaller-scale manufacturing businesses wanting to relocate back to areas where they live. So, you've got a manufacturer who owns a small shop in, in Mississauga and he lives in Centre Wellington. He doesn't necessarily really want to, doesn't need to, or doesn't necessarily want to be located in Mississauga. But that's where, that's where the opportunities are for serviced and designated lands. And there's also potential for labor force in that area. But if, if there's opportunities to grow the labor force and designate the lands within Centre Wellington, I do think there'll continue to be some opportunity for advanced manufacturing and smaller-scale traditional manufacturing jobs. I agree, we're likely not going to see major, large-scale manufacturing to a large extent. The point about accommodating the creative class sector and the knowledge-based sector is a critical one. I think that's definitely something that the township needs to plan for. I've tried to, tried to start to paint that picture through this study here. It's probably beyond the scope of this study to really get into the details and the specifics about what an employment area might specifically accommodate or how it would be, how it should be designed to create that, the place-making and attractiveness to those knowledge-based sectors. But I do work all across Ontario and Canada on employment lands, and we are finding that the concepts of industrial areas or employment areas is evolving. And so, you hear different, sometimes buzzwords or, or terms thrown around, but ideas like innovation districts is something that you hear and see more of. Typically, these are business parks that are anchored by a large-scale, knowledge-based industry like a hospital or a post-secondary institution. And there could be some opportunities in, in Centre Wellington to accommodate that kind of development, given your local hospital here. The Southlands in Ferguson, the future employment areas, that would probably be a good area to explore that kind of concept, because you do have a clean slate to look at accommodating a more high-tech prestige, you know, business park environment, as opposed to trying to develop sites, smaller-scale sites within established industrial areas within Ferguson or Elora. So, those are some overall comments I have. I do think that the economic development strategy is going to be a useful study as well to explore those subsectors. So, we started off looking at the, the sectors from what we call the North American Classification System. They provide, through StatsCan, they provide, and I'm getting really technical on you guys here, but they provide a breakdown of the sectors from a technical standpoint, like manufacturing or professional scientific services. But the, the economic development strategy is going to look at sectors tied more to occupation. It'll look at, you know, whether there's an opportunity for life sciences or green technology or digital media. You know, these are the kind of sectors that I would expect the economic development strategy to really explore. And I do agree, that has to happen soon, because there's no point in leaving that to the end of this analysis.
So, I think, and on that point, economic development strategy, that's in the budget for nineteen? This year, okay. Follow-up, councillor Mackey?
Just, for your information, there was a study done in Centre Wellington by Economic Development half a dozen years ago on what was called a green business park development. So, there's, there's a fair amount of background work that's been done there. But the other question I had for you, though, was one of the, and this may be just because I don't know what has transpired, but along side road one, or first line, I guess, the first line just south of Elora, there's thirty-eight hectare piece of property there that's industrial, and it's not identified in your maps as being part of what's available. So, and it's right beside serviced land, so I think it would be a less expensive area to develop than something in Ferguson, for instance. So, I'm just curious why it was not included.
I think it is here, on page eight, or page six, it's identified there. Oh, on another page? It's on, yeah. Yeah, we'll clarify that, because it is a designated employment land. Councillor Lloyd?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Actually, kind of tapping into what councillor Mackey was talking about, would simply, it would be a much simpler process, I would think, to service the lands outside of Elora, where we have less constraints on the servicing side of it for water and wastewater, having our new wastewater plant. The industrial lands identified outside or on number six highway actually does have some servicing issues that may cause some domino effects regarding a wastewater treatment plant in Ferguson. Is that, is that something that's being discussed at Economic Development Committee?
And that, that is kind of the next step, councillor Lloyd, is identifying those, those lands. Obviously, that's more of a sensitive thing that we'll have to do in closed meetings. But that is kind of, we wanted to steer clear of that in this preliminary findings. But key decisions will have to be made as to what makes sense from a service perspective when we go down that, for sure. Councillor Morse?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jamie, thank you for this report. Appreciate all the work that has gone into it. I'm particularly interested in slide thirty-eight and the line there, third up from the bottom of that slide. The floor space per worker is eighteen hundred square feet per employee. I think the context around this statement is more the manufacturing sector. It makes me believe that perhaps manufacturing is looking more for space than they are for people. And the reason why I say that is I think manufacturing, because of technology, is relying more on automation and robotics than actual hands. So, can you comment on whether that's a growing trend in Ontario? And particularly the comparative municipalities, that you're seeing manufacturing are shrinking their workforce. That's why you have more space for people, because you have more machinery and technology. Is that, is that the case? Am I wrong with that assumption? And also, the second part of this question is, technology has also made it possible for people not to go to work. They can work from home. You know, they can basically do anything in the world now from their home computer. How big of a, of a function is that in these comparative municipalities? Can you comment on these thoughts for me? Thank you.
Yes, great questions through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the average floor space per worker, this is, so this is simply what it says. It's the amount of floor space per, per worker on average within Centre Wellington. Eighteen hundred square feet per worker is a, is a high number, I'll say that. It's not the highest out there, but it's, it's pretty high. We'd probably be averaging in the GTA around a thousand, maybe a little higher. However, places like Milton, for example, are, are probably at that number of eighteen hundred. In some cases, they may even be a bit higher. It's, a lot of it's been, the GGH level's been driven by the transportation, warehousing, logistics sector. It's really the, the primary sector that's jacking up those floor space per worker numbers, because of the fact that big logistics facilities are highly automated and they're not really about accommodating workers, they're about accommodating goods. And with more technology to accommodate and retrieve goods and to, and that allows us also to build up. So, we've got higher floor heights. There's just an overall trend, and larger, bigger consolidated warehousing, there's a general trend to see that number going up rather than down. On the manufacturing sector, you're absolutely right, that the, the trend with respect to automation and technology is also helping to drive that number up and the densities down. And so, as a result, because those are the two primary sectors that we see on employment lands in the industrial sector, we're generally seeing the density trends in employment areas on average in the GTA and the GGH have been going down. They're starting to moderate a little bit, and in some cases, they're, they've, maybe they've hit bottom. But they're generally in a downward trajectory. What's helping keep those densities a bit higher is, getting back to Mr., is it Mackey? His comments about the knowledge-based industry and creative class sectors. More development in those sectors on employment lands is helping to moderate that downward trend in densities. Those sectors tend to have very high densities, commercial densities are very high. And even the employment-supportive sectors, like personal services and retail are also a lot higher. But overall, we don't expect to see a big increase in, in the overall densities on employment lands going forward. We expect to see them probably either comparable or even a bit lower than what the current densities are today, unless you are going to significantly shift your focus in terms of how you're going to be planning your employment areas and if you were going to look at a, you know, a scenario that was much more oriented towards the prestige industrial and office market, then there would be, I think, a, there'd be justification for higher densities in that, in that, in that type of scenario. In terms of the work at home, again, I completely agree with that comment, that we are seeing more opportunities for work at home. We see that sector growing as a, in terms of overall growth and the percentage of growth of employment and work at home, and no fixed place of work, so people who don't necessarily go to the same location every day, like landscape architects or you may have a, maybe a, an IT consultant freelancing, you know, and you may have multiple offices you work in. Those sectors are also growing more quickly than what we call the usual place-of-work sectors. But there's a limit to how much work at home employment you can, you can achieve in a more traditional manufacturing or industrial-type setting. So, depending on the nature, again, of the types of uses we're trying to accommodate, work at home is going to have a, it's going to vary in terms of how significant it's going to be within these specific employment areas that we're, that we're planning for.
Councillor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I just want to thank you for this report and thanks to Economic Development Committee, too. It's an excellent, an excellent report. I guess my question goes to, maybe it's to staff more than to Jamie. This is entitled preliminary report, so what's the sequence of events going forward? What are we to expect in terms of follow-up? And I'm particularly interested in, I think, what's mentioned here a couple of times is the Economic Development Action Plan or Strategy or something that, that has been advocated and where it fits in to the time and the scheme of the things that we're going to expect from here on in. Because I think what this report demonstrates, certainly to me, is we need to do something, we need to be proactive in this area. We need to take steps rather than just waiting for the market to sell us. Presumably, the economic action plan would be a very early piece of determining what it is we exactly should be doing. So, I just wonder where that fits in the scheme of things, what other things follow. And then after that, I have one other question, Mr. Mayor.
Brett, you want to take that one?
Sure, thank you. Well, I got, in terms of the, the second steps on the-
Sure, thank you. Um, well, I got, in terms of the, the second steps on this report, as Jamie mentioned, we are, we are looking into uh, land values and development costs and uh, working with um, finance on tax assessment, um, costs and those sorts of things. So the next stage of the report that when Jamie comes back, we'll be looking at, into more detail on the actual cost of developing land and um, how much it might cost us to buy it, how much it's worth uh, when it's serviced. Um, so to, to enhance the, the actual business case. And then in terms of the action plan, it's, it's part of the uh, capital budget for this year. We've applied for a, a provincial grant, which we're understanding will be April before we hear uh, in terms of the grant funding. Um, if you look at, if you're looking at the employment strategy, there's work that has to be done, um, Jamie alluded to this as well, under the growth plan. Uh, and, and unfortunately now, a lot of this work is, has been mandated to be done by the upper tier, uh, which means it'll be done at the county level. That is an employment strategy. Uh, that gets into uh, things like, there's allowance in the growth plan now to break down your employment into some of the more user and uh, land intensive uses, uh, like warehousing and separating that from uh, s- the traditional uh, manufacturing. So there's that work. But uh, the action plan, as I said, in April is when we expect to hear from, from the province on our, on our grant. And we do have um, county grant we're looking for under their BRNE program. In terms of looking at the future land, we are looking at short-term, you know, kind of medium and long-term, because all of the employment areas, you know, no matter what type of development it is, they all still need land. And there's no question that as of now, we're, we're close to being out of sort of ready-to-go land. So those are the scenarios. We're looking at how we make uh, to address short-term needs, where we have an immediate issue of supply and then uh, longer-term needs. We are, of course, advancing in the capital budget, the secondary plan for the land in the south end of Fergus that includes both the employment and um, residential land for the future. That, that secondary plan is in our budget for this year. So we'll be getting started on that as well. So we're trying to look at all short, medium, long-term and what sectors to target through the action plan.
Council Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one follow-up. I noticed on one of the slides in the presentation that we have twelve hectares or so of serviced brownfield lands. As part of the action plan or as part of any other activities that we're undertaking, are, are we developing or should we developing some kind of strategies or programs or something to, to try and bring them on, even if it's a bridge until we get to the final destination of, of additional greenfield lands? Are we doing anything in that area and if so, what are, or are we planning to?
Well, our CIP already addresses those lands, so we do have, uh, we have some uh, the priority site. Some of the brownfield sites have been identified already as, as priority sites. Um, we also have a grant opportunity for people to do soil testing is one of our grant programs under the CIP. So that was definitely uh, something we looked at when we did the CIP is the brownfield employment land. No matter where we go, there's always uh, there are servicing issues with, with just about all the other uh, lands, some that, that need to be looked at as well.
But Brett, just to clarify though, um, the priority sites that were, have been in this document included as brownfield sites, they've already come to council as identified priority sites that are eligible for CIP funding.
That's right.
Council Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to address some of the concerns about uh, the necessary uh, land for manufacturing. Um, and that perhaps we weren't, you know, looking to chase smokestacks. Manufacturing is, I mean, I'm in manufacturing personally, but I do very low-tech manufacturing. But generally, I, I read a lot of journals and manufacturing is not blue-collar work anymore. It's almost sixty percent of all employment in manufacturing have engineering degrees or technical degrees. So it's not like that. It's, 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 it's reversed where, you know, probably twenty-five to thirty years ago, you would have two engineers and fifty workers. It's not like that. You have twenty-five workers and twenty of them are engineers. You know, and so that's sort of generally how uh, manufacturing is, and that's how it's coming back to North America. So just wanted to point that out.
Council Miller?
Thank you. Um, one thing I did wanna report, um, remind us as council is, one of the reasons we brought this report forward and Council Fisher alluded to that is what's the next step. As we're working with um, the Economic Development Committee, we're looking at saying, instead of us coming out with a report with a recommendation and a one-shot deal, we're saying, let's bring everybody to speed. Let's roll everybody along with the same process, so that we're not, um, the questions you're asking are very good questions that we're rolling around in our minds, even at the committee level. So now, we as council are starting to think through this process, bringing it back to committee level and not having a surprise meeting suddenly saying, here's a recommendation, but that it's very forthcoming, looking at where we're going. Um, even the conversations which uh, Council McQueen are speaking about, those are all things happening at that level to say, uh, what do we wanna do and how are we gonna move forward? So this is not a presentation of this is where we're going necessarily, or this is a, um, this here is our proposal today, but this is where we're at and we're moving towards a direction. The economic development um, strategic plan is part of that, saying this is, this is where we're going, piece by piece. So I think that um, we want, I really wanted to point that out to say this is step one in the process of heading towards a good plan and keeping council informed.
Uh, on that note, as far as the next step, um, we're thinking, well, this is gonna come back to council, um, with some recommendations, April, May timeframe. Is that what we're looking at? Okay. And so then, um, this report would go to the next level and not be preliminary. So any other discussions that we have to have in, in the meantime, um, let's feel free to have those discussions, because we wanna make sure that we're doing something that uh, addresses the challenges that we're faced with, um, and make sure that we um, have opportunities, that it's, it's, we recognize what the uh, the key industries are out there and that we have opportunities to make sure that we have people that have good, good jobs in those industries and that we provide opportunities for work here in Centre Wellington. So we wanna get to that endpoint and however we need to do that, now we wanna make sure that we're making smart decisions. So, um, anything else from council on this one? And this is coming back uh, to council in, in a month or so. And thanks, so thanks very much, Jamie. Thanks for watching for all the good work. Wanted to also thank uh, members of the Economic Development Task Force. We've had a lot of in-depth discussions about this and, and several other uh, issues. Thanks to Pat for all the work that you've done on this. And thanks for coming in, in the middle of a day on a Monday, on a Monday, um, and being here. And you feel free to stay for the rest of the, the committee whole or feel free to leave now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You guys know that you can do whatever you want, whenever you want. Okay, so moving on, uh, I think we still have to confirm an agenda for today. Yeah, we do. Uh, I have a recommendation that the Council of Townships Centre Wellington confirmed the agenda for its meeting held March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Moved by Council Lloyd, seconded by Council Morris, all in favor? And that is carried. Uh, we have uh, minutes from a committee of the whole meeting, February twentieth. I have a recommendation to, that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen be adopted and circulated. Uh, Council McQueen, seconded by Council Lloyd, all in favor? And that is carried. No delegations today, so the first uh, report that we have is a zoning amendment on the side road six north. We have a report from Mariana. Welcome, Mariana.
Thank you. Through you, Mary Lynton. The property at fifty-nine ninety-six, side road six north, southwest, southwest corner of side road six north and six line is the subject of the zoning amendment before you in former Nickel Township. And it is related to a farm dwelling surplus severance due to farm consolidation. As required by provincial and county policies, the rezoning would prohibit the construction of a residence on the retained farm parcel and is a condition of the severance. The proposed ever parcel with the dwelling will comply with zoning. A public meeting was held on February twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen to obtain public input. No submissions were received at that public meeting. The GRCA and the county have no objection to the rezoning and no other oral or written submissions were received. Staff have no objection to the rezoning and recommend that council approve the amendment and enact the bylaw.
Thanks, Mariana. Any questions from council? Okay, I'll read the recommendation. That the Council of Townships Centre Wellington approve application RZ zero-one slash eighteen and the appropriate zoning bylaw amendment be given three readings. Move for that recommendation. Council McQueen, seconded by Council Morris, all in favor? And that is carried. Okay, talking about Riverfest. And we have, uh, Dorothy is gonna come up here. Welcome, Dorothy.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to uh, request the use of Bissell Park for Riverfest again this year. They're in their tenth annual year. It's gonna take place, it would like to take place on August seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth of this year. And they are asking to once again have permission for the event to take place in Bissell Park. And in addition to that, they would like to also have um, the event designated as a significant municipal event in order to serve alcohol and that the um, noise bylaw, they get an exemption from eleven PM to eleven-thirty PM. Last year, they um, had their noise bylaw to midnight and they've cut it back to eleven-thirty this year.
Thank you very much, Dorothy. Questions from council? I think some of the residents in the area would, will like the fact that they have pulled it back by half an hour. Um, we did receive a few concerns last year about it, but this is a great event. Uh, so I have a recommendation that the Council of Townships Centre Wellington authorizes Riverfest two thousand and eighteen to be held in Bissell Park on August seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, with the ampli- amplification of music between two PM and eleven-thirty PM on the seventeenth and eighteenth, and between two PM and eight PM on the nineteenth, subject to the organizers' planning and implementing the requirements to ensure public safety as required by the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Montreal, Ontario Provincial Police and the Centre Wellington Municipal Alcohol Policy, and that the Council of Townships Centre Wellington approves Riverfest two thousand and eighteen, scheduled for August seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in Bissell Park as a significant municipal event in order to serve uh, alcohol during the event, and that the Council of Townships Centre Wellington grants an exemption from bylaw five thousand and one dash zero five, the township, township noise bylaw from eleven PM to eleven-thirty on August seventeenth and eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Move for that recommendation. Council Fisher, seconded by Council McQueen, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Dorothy. Moving on to seven point three, asset management information report. And we have our managing director of corporate services, Dan. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. Um, this is an information report, but I thought it would be good to speak to the committee uh, about this as it's a, a fairly significant initiative that we'll be undertaking over the next uh, six years. Uh, so Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen passed in uh, December. And that regulation under the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act makes asset management a legislative requirement for municipalities in Ontario. Um, with that, um, the province has obviously been promoting asset management for almost twenty years now as a best practice. Uh, but this now does make it a legislative requirement going forward. Uh, they've implemented a, a phased-in compliance to the, to the regulation. Uh, starting in July of twenty nineteen, um, the township has to have a strategic asset management policy in place that talks about how asset management will be integrated into other policies and procedures and strategies across, across the organization. It talks about what our approach to continually updating and improving our asset management plan is. The role of council, the role of public, the public in, in the asset management process. Um, and, and really just outline a timeline as to how we intend to implement asset management within the township. Uh, beyond that July first, twenty nineteen deadline, um, there are three other staggered deadlines between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-four, where we have to be fully compliant with, with the regulation. And, and those deadlines are, are around having an asset management plan in place, first of all, for core infrastructure assets, which are your roads, bridges, water, wastewater, storm assets, and then rolling it out to all other assets uh, by, by July twenty-twenty-three. And then uh, providing further information and context on those assets by July twenty-twenty-four. Uh, it does sound like a lot of time to implement this process, but there are, there are asking for a, a significant undertaking when it comes to being able to not have a, an inventory of, being able to have an, an inventory of your assets and to be able to update that inventory on a continual basis. Um, to update your asset management plan every five years. Uh, to provide a full level of service analysis on those assets, such as uh, what level of service we're currently providing to residents and compare that to the level of service we are anticipating on providing in the future. And what is the differential cost in providing current level of service and expected level of service? We have to look at the performance of our assets in rolling out those levels of service. Uh, the lifecycle management strategy, which is the ongoing lifecycle cost to maintain our assets over a ten-plus period uh, forecast. A financial strategy in terms of what is the impact of this asset management strategy on, on all of our different funding um, sources that are available to us. And it has to have an up, annual update to council, um, in terms of our progress towards asset management planning. The biggest piece to this is, is really integrating asset management into the day-to-day operations of, of the township. It's no longer something we can do every few years and sort of refer to it as part of the budget process. It has to be an indirect component to what we do on a day-to-day basis. So that's, that's gonna be the challenge over the next six years is to actually change our way of thinking to not only stay asset management is a good thing, but asset management is something that we can rely on on a day-to-day basis to make our, our decisions. In terms of what we've done to date, uh, we've established an internal staff committee, um, representing staff from the different departments within the organization to start talking about this policy document we need in place by uh, July twenty-nineteen. Uh, the intent is to have this policy document in place uh, sometime early in twenty-nineteen for review and consideration with, with council at that point in time. Uh, we've also implemented a working group at the county level, uh, where we have representatives from every municipality within the county, the county itself and the city of Guelph, um, where we're gonna be bouncing off ideas of, off each other and, and working towards compliance in a, in a joint initiative. But with that, I just, we, we've attached the regulation as part of the report for council's uh, late-night reading. Um, but other than that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to uh, answer them for you.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, Council Ketchus?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think the financial implications, um, really nothing's really, you, you don't really say anything there. And I'm, I'm kind of concerned about um, what the tax implications, uh, cause it sort of seems like a giant black hole uh, that has possibilities of expanding rapidly. So I was wondering if you have any um, information about how other places have done this and where that goes financially?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's, it's left blank, because at this point, we're still trying to get a handle on what, what the impact is going to be. And that's really the, the function of that strategic asset management policy that's required by, by early twenty-nineteen to, to outline what our implementation strategy is and what the actual cost of that implementation strategy is going to be. I foresee this as being, um, it's, it's gonna be systems-related and that, and that there's probably gonna be software-related costs to implementing asset management. I see this as a, a, a staffing challenge in that there will likely be a staffing um, function to asset management above and beyond what we have today. Um, and more than likely, there's going to be consultants involved as well in that a lot of the asset management function requires really detailed information, including condition assessments and replacement values on your assets. And, and um, in the absence of having um, the technical expertise and the actual time to do that, you have to rely on, on the, the use of consultants. But we, we fully plan on having But we, we fully plan on having that addressed in, in the strategic asset management policy that, uh, will be in place early next year.
Thanks, and just add to that, is there any discussions with, on the county side of things? Is there any discussion about sharing any costs when it comes to systems or staffing? Because all seven municipalities are gonna have to move in this direction, so I'm just wondering if there's cost efficiencies there?
Uh, that's definitely something that's on the agenda. Um, we're, we're all moving towards the same initiative, so it makes sense to try to pool or share resources. And to that, uh, the Municipal Finance Officers Association is actually encouraging municipalities to pool and share resources on this initiative. So it's something we're, we're definitely looking into.
Council Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dan, just as a follow-up to what sort of Council Ketchus suggested a minute ago. We all know that asset management is a, is a major undertaking and a very expensive initiative. So will, will the work that you be undertaking to do over the next few years include a ten-year financial plan that will identify not just costs, but also sources of revenue for, for this kind of plan?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So, so part of the financing strategy, uh, the province is looking for a minimum ten-year forecast period, and that's not just a ten-year forecast of costs to maintain the assets and maintain the asset management plan, but it's also a funding plan for those ten years. Um, so we have to look at, um, the, the associated cost over a minimum ten-year period as well as how we intend to fund them over the ten years. So that'll all be detailed within the, uh, within the asset management plan.
Andy?
Just to add to that, um, since this is provincially driven, you know, part of this, I think, is also the province betting, understanding the infrastructure and the deficits that they're required, uh, to meet provincial-wide. And their funding support to the local municipalities, this is something AMO's been pushing and MFOW have been pushing for a number of years, saying, you know, we have, we've been completing these asset managed plans. We've identified significant shortfalls in all local municipalities to be able to do that. And we're starting to see from the province and the federal level of moving towards less granting uh, for larger projects like bridges and things like that, and more to like the OCF funding, where we're seeing sustainable funding each year allocated to each municipalities. So that is something that we will be pushing not only from local hit level, but at the county level and as well at the AMO level, saying that by developing these plans, the province and the federal government are having to take a, a larger share um, of those revenue streams to be able to support local municipalities.
Council Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to comment and, and thank you for the report, Dan. I, I think reading this report, this is probably one of the more important reports and pieces of information that we're ever going to receive. Because I think, as was said, when this process is completely rolled out, it will go to the heart of virtually everything we do as a municipality. It will be a governing, uh, functional thing for everything we do going forward, for all our decision-making, all our financial decision-making, and that is the intent of the province. And it's not discretionary to us, it's, it's mandatory. So I think all I can suggest is that anybody, it's kind of sounds, it sounds like an esoteric financial kind of issue, but it really isn't. Anybody out there who's interested in municipal issues, interested in municipal, the, the system that the municipality operates in, and interested in municipal governance, especially this year, this is required reading. And I would suggest that everybody who's interested, please, please, please read it. It's only gonna get more involved, more complex and more detailed, and it will be of fundamental importance to all of us going forward.
I just wanna add a little bit to that, um, especially since the province is, uh, is integrating service levels with asset management. So that gets way right into our budgeting, all the budgeting decisions we have to make, every, every decision we have to make. Because now we're, we're having to justify our assets and our service levels of those assets for our community. Council Andy?
Uh, just a council recall, Sm, we had Nigel Pale Chamber here giving us a review of our financials. One of the key lines that he made out of that presentation is with this asset management policy coming forward and what the province is mandating, this is going to lessen or the province is gonna have more, um, presence over local government financing and budgeting. That's exactly as Council Fisher said, this is the province putting more controls and more mechanisms in order to that there'll be less real discussion and ability to make changes at the local budgeting level.
Council Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know whether this, my question is for Colin or for Dan, but, um, who, where do the standards come for all these assets? Because that's really what you're going to be, uh, servicing, like, in the, in the long run. Cause, um, you know, there's a lot of discussion, um, just, you know, by the common man, like, why are we putting in a four million dollar bridge when I could have a culvert there? So where do the standards come from?
Uh, through Mayor Linton. So yeah, levels of, of service, um, you know, it's different for every, every piece of infrastructure, but, um, uh, there is, um, like a national benchmarking initiative that, uh, a number of municipalities participate in. We don't specifically, but, but, um, they provide um, kind of a, you know, number of, things like a number of water main breaks per kilometer of water main in your system. So you can look at, okay, what are, are the municipalities of similar size experiencing in terms of water main breaks? Everyone, every municipality goes, that has a water system goes through it. Um, but then you can get a comparison. I think that's part of the standardized, um, information that, that the province is looking at capturing, just so that, and, and they're actually, I, I believe through this process, looking at standardizing levels of service, so that if you meet a specific levels of service, that, um, you know, that's, you've met the mark. If you're not, there may be funding to assist you to get to that point, so. Um, so I think that's, that's part of what, uh, the province is referring to when they're, they're talking about levels of service for, for linear infrastructure. Um, and the same for, for structures. I don't think they get into the detail of picking, uh, kind of what structure is appropriate for what type of situation. They, they do leave that up to the, uh, uh, the designers for the specific projects. But, uh, for linear infrastructure, you know, another metric would be, um, like sewer blockages uh, per kilometer of, of sewer main in your system. So those are the kind of level of services that, uh, that they're actually looking at measuring and requiring municipalities to report on.
Yeah, and, and just to add to that, so a lot of what you have to rely on in the initial look at your level of service is what the legislative requirement is in each area. So somewhere like, like water and wastewater assets is very heavily legislated in how you, how you provide services um, from a water and wastewater perspective. So you, you use that as sort of the, the, the minimum level of service that you're able to provide. And then you assess whether or not you want to provide something above and beyond that. So for roads, we have minimal maintenance standards that we have to follow. Um, but is that what our level of service is going to be to provide minimal maintenance standards, or is it something higher than that?
Council Ketchus?
Is there any flexibility in that if you're a rural municipality?
I, I, I think the challenge is being with the funding. Clearly what the province is setting up in order to get funding for them, it's going back to, we used to have, you know, provincial agreements with local municipalities, you would get so much funding based on population, based on how much road you had. Those all kind of went by the wayside. I think we're going back into that framework where the province is gonna be saying, you need to meet these standards. And if you don't, that may tie up with some of your funding that we're allocating. Um, and hopefully it will move it more to helping those that can't make it due to what our financial versus what we're seeing in certain cases now where there isn't a real good rationale as to why certain funding went one place versus another place.
Okay, I read the recommendation that the Council of the Township of St. Wellington received as information report COR two thousand eighteen dash one zero dated March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen regarding asset management planning in St. Wellington. Move for that recommendation? Council Fisher, seconded by Council Van Luin, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, so moving on to environmental monitoring structure twenty-seven W G. This is, you got this, Dan? Okay, Dan.
I'm gonna start off and then Stephanie's gonna add some, some technical, um, pieces to the end.
Okay.
Um, so this is a report to have a single source award for, um, environmental monitoring of structure twenty-seven W G. This is something we talked about, uh, as part of the twenty eighteen budget deliberations. One of the requirements, uh, put on by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry with respect to the work being done on twenty-seven W G. Um, AECOM has been doing work for us going back to twenty-ten, um, on the specific structure. So what we're asking is to basically extend the contract to, to move beyond, uh, uh, twenty eighteen into, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, we've included a list of, uh, anticipated costs on, uh, the last page of the report, spanning twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. Um, and we've shown an additional column there with the non-rebate H S D included. Um, based on what we have in the twenty eighteen budget for, for monitoring on this structure um, of sixty thousand dollars, uh, we're going to be slightly over budget in twenty eighteen. But given this is a project that extends over multiple years, what we're suggesting is not to, not to fund the, uh, eighteen hundred dollars in, in twenty eighteen that will deal with the reconciliation of the cost when we get to the twenty nineteen budget and, and, and so on. Uh, but with that, I'll, I'll pass things over to Stephanie.
Thanks. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, through you, Mayor Linton, I would like to give some of the, uh, background on the Bridge Twenty-seven W G project. Um, Bridge Twenty-seven W G is located on side road twenty between the fifth and the sixth line. And it is on a stretch of the Irvine Creek where the red side dace fish species had been previously seen, um, over fifteen years ago. The red side dace is a species at risk under the Endangered Species Act. And the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry has deemed that the Irvine Creek is suitable fish habitat for the red side dace. So Bridge Twenty-seven W G was, uh, almost one hundred years old and was in a state of, uh, structural, um, disrepair, very poor condition and had been closed to traffic since twenty fifteen. And the township had been undergoing, um, the process to work towards replacing that bridge. And as part of that, um, the Ministry of Natural Resources and the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, um, as a condition of the bridge replacement, they require that the red side dace fish species, that, um, the creek be monitored for the fish and that that monitoring be reported on. So Triton Engineering served as the vendor of record for the project. And, uh, they were involved from the Schedule B class environmental assessment phase through the design, engineering, and consulting through tender and construction. And as part of Triton's work, they hired AECOM as the environmental consultants on the project. AECOM came on board in twenty-ten and they participated through all of the phases, starting with the, uh, class environmental assessment. They provided consulting for environmental studies and reports for the E A as well as ecological field surveys for things like bird nesting and fish habitat. They were instrumental in, uh, providing liaison and facilitation with the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, the, uh, Grand River Conservation Authority, and with, uh, working very closely with all of those regulatory agencies for all the permits and approvals that were required. Um, for example, fish collection permits were required for the construction of cofferdams for the bridge construction. And, uh, those fish collection permits were spearheaded and, um, received by the AECOM consultants. AECOM also developed, uh, landscape restoration plans for the construction drawings. And they developed erosion and sediment control plans also for the construction period. Um, AECOM also did the, uh, the red side dace fish monitoring and reporting throughout the construction period. So the, uh, construction of Bridge Twenty-seven W G was, uh, started in twenty seventeen and, um, went on hiatus over the winter and is gonna be starting back up this April and, uh, will be completed this May. So once the bridge construction is finished, then Triton's role in the project also comes to a close because their construction contract administration will also wrap up. But, um, AECOM's environmental monitoring needs to proceed for the next four years in accordance with the M N R F regulations. So, um, for that ongoing environmental monitoring, AECOM worked in consultation with the M N R F and the D F O to develop an overall benefit monitoring and reporting plan. And they came up with, uh, an innovative, uh, method of doing that um, called E D N A, electronic DNA sampling for the, basically for the DNA of the red side dace fish species. So they'll be taking, uh, water samples at fourteen locations along the Irvine Creek and then working with the University of Guelph to test those water samples for the presence of the red side dace fish DNA. And as a, as a backup to that, they'll be using also the more traditional C N netting, uh, sampling process at four locations along the creek. And through that monitoring, um, they'll be able to identify conclusively if the red side dace fish species is actually, still continues to be present on the, uh, stretch of Irvine Creek or, or if it is no longer there. So to wrap things up, AECOM, through their continued involvement on the project since twenty-ten, they're very familiar with, uh, this project, um, and with the reporting requirements for all of the regulatory agencies involved. Um, they have well-established contacts on the projects with the M N R F, the D F O, and the G R C A. And, uh, they're very knowledgeable on the red side dace fish species itself and on identifying it. And, um, they're ideally suited for the ongoing environmental monitoring and reporting over the next four years. So, um, we are recommending that, uh, the township hire AECOM directly, seeing as Triton's involvement in the project is coming to a close shortly.
Thanks, uh, Stephanie. Council McLean?
Thanks, Stephanie and Dan. Uh, now I understand what you had written previously, so it's good stuff. Um, this is just kind of a curiosity question, but given that construction is finishing in another month or so, and there hasn't been any sign of red side dace to this point.
That's right.
What happens if AECOM does happen to find a red side dace swimming under the bridge next week or next month or sometime this summer? I mean, the, what, what is the benefit of this? Are we just doing a environmental research on the red side dace for M N R F? And basically it has no, nothing to do with benefits to the center or to St. Wellington? It is M N R F research that we're doing for them?
Essentially, it is M N R F research because they, they didn't have any, um, good data, any good recent data on whether the red side dace is actually present or absent in that stretch of the Irvine Creek. Their, their last, um, reported sighting was over fifteen years ago, but they have a twenty-year period. So if the fish has been seen within the last twenty years, then they have to consider it as being fish habitat for that species. And so to address that data gap, uh, on behalf of the ministry, um, they want us to do this, this basically presence or absence fish survey to determine whether the red side dace species is still present on the Irvine Creek or if it's no longer there. Um, there's some other benefits to the work that, uh, that we are doing. We are doing some landscape restoration plans along the, um, the bank full width of, of the Irvine Creek and along the, the bridge embankments themselves. So we're restoring some areas of, uh, of the embankment essentially to be better, better habitat with the correct plantings and AECOM designed that.
So just to, to clarify, we couldn't go ahead with doing the bridge work until we, uh, uh, said that we would do this program?
That's correct, yeah.
Council McLean?
Just a quick follow-up, there is absolutely no chance of M N R F funding for us doing their work. Is that correct?
That's correct. They, as part of the, uh, the permit, they have approved this overall benefit plan, which is the, the four-year long-term monitoring and reporting with the fish surveys.
Non-government, it would be considered a bad word to do, hold, hold us ransom like that, wouldn't it?
I, I, I think one of the-
Longer term implications for the township could be if there is no, for the next four or five years and it gets beyond the twenty, any additional work we long. Do along that section, we would not have to address that species. So there is somewhat some longer term benefit if there is no setting up.
Counselor Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering this company, A E com, how much have we paid them so far? In the term that they've been working for us?
We might have to take a look at that and report back to council as to what through the entire project of the overall. Couple million dollars that we've spent on this bridge, but we had something we could provide to council.
But just to just to clarify though, is is there, like, this this cost value is associated with the actions that we're required to take in the future? Like, there's nothing here that's net new. This is what was approved by M N R F?
Yes.
So there's nothing, nothing new that they're bringing to the table, more value add than searching for this red bellied fish?
No, the work that they're doing specifically addresses the conditions of the permit by the M N R F.
Counselor Kitcher?
I'm I'm just, they said that we hired them from two thousand ten, so I'm just wondering how much. We've paid them. Like, it's not just the bridge project. We we've had them before too, so I'm just wondering how much.
Yeah, A E com, we have just specifically on this bridge. And we do have A E com on our, we did bring forward A E com and on their project, I think, recently? No? No, but if it's specifically A E com to this project, we can get, we can pull that number and give it. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So we did just recently hire A E com for the. Long term water supply. But we can give you the cost, we can go back and check and give you the, how much expenditure we've paid A E com in the life of that bridge during the project.
Counselor Kitcher?
Is A E com like a local company or is it like an international affiliate?
They're they're actually both. They have local branches in Kitchener and in Guelph and they are also international. They have branches all throughout Canada and overseas.
If I could add, there there are a bunch of local companies that have that have kind of been bought up. So the group, this group specifically is based out of Guelph. Used to be Gartner Lee Limited, so fairly well, local kind of southern Ontario. Environmental company that was purchased probably about six or seven years ago by A E com. So but still has the similar staff from the Gartner Lee days, so.
Okay, I read the recommendation that the Council of Townships Center wanted to approve the single source award for environmental monitoring requirements of the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry. In connection to structure twenty seven W G to A E com can unlimited for the total upset limit of ninety five thousand five hundred eighty six exclusive of H S T. Move for that recommendation? Counselor Lloyd, seconded by Counselor Kitcher, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Stephanie. Moving on to an exciting. Exciting new playground installation at Veterans Park at Alora Meadows Park. So Dan, you're taking the lead on this? And Matt, yeah, Matt's here as well. Okay, perfect.
Yes, I'll I'll start things off and if there's questions about the park or the play structures, then Matt and Matthew are here to to answer questions. So we have two sites on this request for proposal. Site one being Veterans Park, site two being Alora Meadows Park. And with our purchasing policy requirements, because it was a request for proposal, we're coming forward with council approval for for award. And because it was a request for proposal, it's it's not obviously just based on price. It's a full valuation of. Of submissions by by proponents. Based on references, play opportunities, play value, safety, durability, appearance, warranty and price. We did have seven, seven proposals received. So for Veterans Park, we're looking at the replacement of existing outdated equipment that's really reached its useful life. We're suggesting the the highest valued proposal was from Open Space Solutions. At a cost of forty eight thousand three hundred ninety three dollars and forty four cents. Which does include some alternate pricing for this new geotextile fabric. That we would use instead of sand. And this excludes H S T. We've shown a design of of what the structure would potentially look like in Attachment A to the report. Alora Meadows Park is Site Two and this is for a new playground structure on a new park. And again, this one is suggested to be awarded to Open Space Solutions Inc. At a cost of one hundred and thirty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollars and ninety four cents excluding H S T. And from a financial perspective, Veterans Park has an approved budget of fifty thousand. So we're within seven hundred and fifty dollars of that approved budget, so we're under budget in in that park. Alora Meadows, it is coming in slightly over budget. It's basically just the cost of the non rebate H S D that's pulling us over budget there. But that project, because it's a new park, it is funded ninety percent through development charges. So ninety percent of the two thousand four hundred and sixty five dollar overage can come from development charges, which means we're only. Two hundred and forty five dollars. Over budget to be funded from the General Capital Reserve.
Counselor Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were both of these projects identified or possibly going to be identified in our upcoming? Parks and Recreation Master Plan or are these parks that have been overlooked for a period of time? And now they need to have their their structures replaced or in installed?
For Veterans Park, it's it's at the point of of needing replacement. And. The one for Alora Meadows, it was part of our plan moving forward.
So Veterans Park was identified in our lifecycle replacement costs for that park. For the agent aware of the equipment and also the amount of use that it's getting in that park and then as part of the overall subdivision development of Alora Meadows. It was planned to have a park and a play structure in for that neighborhood. And so now we're just getting around to getting that play structure installed.
Counselor McLean?
Thanks, just a quick question that the. Material is being used in to replace sand. Is it got a much longer life, less cost to keep it going over the over the lifespan?
It's, I guess it, it's a cheaper version of accessibility, so. Unlike a park similar to Tate or State over in in Fergus, we've got the rubber. The next or the cheaper version is it's a fiber mulch. And with this product, as it wears down, we just keep adding material to it. Usually, I would say about every five years, you're you're adding to it. And for the most part, it's just being raked out monthly and just throughout the year.
Counselor Morris?
Thank you. Just on the question of the life cycle. Is the life cycle going to be extended now due to the fact that we're maybe using better quality equipment as a replacement? Are we going to extend that on our budget process then to, I don't know what the life cycle is on these playground equipment, but is that going to be extended?
Yes, yeah, it's just with the the better warranty. And our maintenance, we're regulated to monthly inspections. So we're we're on top of things and if there are repairs, we're on top of it and. Simple little things like missing bolts and stuff like that that do come loose, we we check that monthly and. By keeping on top of it, we, that'll extend the life for sure.
Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, just a quick question. Veterans Park, is it pavilion that's there? The structure that's already there, the building, the roof and the pad, is removing it part of this job or is that a separate undertaking or is that being planned?
That, the picnic shelter has been removed this past, just last week, but it was not part of this local work.
Yeah, it's up on the other side of the hill.
I was there two weeks ago and it was still there, so it's just gone. Okay, good. Just wanted to comment on the Alora Meadows thing. I know. It's been a bit of a long haul for the residents to get that park. It was, as people remember, that subdivision has a bit of a convoluted history and. I know it's basically built out around the area where the park is going to be and I know Wayne is here and some of the residents have been actively trying to get it. In place for some time, so it's really a commitment through the development process to to your question, Counselor Lloyd, and and I think it's it's long overdue and it's good news for them.
Counselor Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering about the. It looks like a very high tech playground and I was wondering about, there isn't any wood and and natural materials in this and I was wondering why that criterion was chosen?
The materials nowadays, they're getting away from the wood. It's wear and tear and. There's a longer life with with the steel and and the setup. So yeah, so there's the plastic component as well, which. In some case, they they try to make that. The plastic look more earthy in in some cases, but just because of the durability. That's where a lot of the manufacturers are are leaning that way.
And and termites don't like plastic. Anything else? I just wanted to echo Counselor Fisher's comments about the neighborhood. I think that's why when we do most of our neighborhoods now, we try to get that park in there beforehand because it's easier to get it in before. Instead of having to wait. So I know Warren's here and you can let your neighborhood know that this this playground is coming, so that's awesome news. I read the recommendation that the Council of Townships Center wanted to award request for proposal forty four dash seventeen regarding playground. Installation Site One Veterans Park to Open Space Solutions Inc. at an upset limit of forty eight thousand three hundred ninety three and forty four cents exclusive of H S T. And at the Council of Townships Center wanted to award request for proposal forty four dash seventeen regarding playground installation Site Two, Alora Meadows Park to Open Space Solutions Inc. At an upset limit of one hundred thirty nine thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars and ninety four cents exclusive of H S T and that funding for both playgrounds be revised as shown in Report. C O R two thousand eighteen dash zero eight dated March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. Move for that recommendation? Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Lloyd, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, so moving on to seven point six fees and charges by law amendment. Dan?
Thank you. So with this report, staff are recommending an amendment to the twenty eighteen fees and charges. It was a bylaw that we had passed through as part of the twenty eighteen budget process in in December twenty seventeen. What we're suggesting here is within Schedule G of the bylaw, which relates to infrastructure services, there are. There are fees that are centered around having properties connected into our water wastewater systems and storm systems. Those fees are typically broke down into three subcomponents. The first is a connection charge. Which is the cost associated with extending services from the the main within the road allowance to the property line. We're suggesting that that component of of the connection charge stay as as is, so we're not suggesting a change to to the connection charge. The second item is the extension or the frontage charge. Which is basically the property's cost to extend services across the frontage of the property, so it's to get services to the property. So we're suggesting in this case to reduce that charge, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And then the third piece is an area wide charge, which is more in relation to the system wide costs of of the systems themselves and making sure that those system wide costs such as. Providing wells and treatment plants and wastewater treatment facilities are funded. We're suggesting that that component of of the fees and charges be eliminated. So with with the two suggested changes, reducing the frontage charge and eliminating the area wide charges. The the purpose for this amendment is is largely in part to the fact that. The the cost to connect to our our water wastewater systems has been perceived to be too high. It's, we've had property owners approach us and and wishing to connect to our systems, but. Given the financial cost to do so have not, have not. And a good example of that is on County Road eighteen. Where the services were extended between Fergus and Alora. We've put into our fees and charges now for approximately ten years, the cost to have those properties along County Road eighteen connect into our our systems. And to date, nobody has done it. And in a large part, that is because some of them want to do it, but it the the cost to do so is considered prohibitive to them. So what we're suggesting is the frontage or the extension charge right now. For County Road eighteen is based on these equivalent residential units. So you're you're charged. A fee based on the potential number of E R U's or equivalent residential units that can go on the property. So if you have one E R U on the property now, but you have the potential of having ten, you have to pay ten times the fee. So what we're suggesting is reducing that so that they pay the the extension or frontage charge based on the current residential equivalent units. And in the future, if they do add additional services in, then they pay additional fees at that time. So it makes it more affordable at this point in time, but we're not ignoring the fact that there are potential for expansion on on those properties in the future. The second piece is the area wide charge. So these are system wide costs associated with. Wells, treatment plants and so forth. An important consideration here is that growth related costs are not included in the fees and charges. It's something that's paid for through developers and development charges. So what we're talking about here are the the non growth related costs to these system wide charges. Right now, obviously, the County Road eighteen work was done ten years ago. That work is completely funded already through water and wastewater rates, so. The fact that we haven't recovered these fees from the County Road eighteen properties to date just means that they, those costs were already funded through. General water wastewater rates across all property owners across. The the full water system between Fergus and Alora. So what we're suggesting is if if we eliminate the area wide charge, again, it makes the total charge to connect to the township's systems much more affordable. And then we continue to recover those system wide costs through the general water wastewater rates of the township rather than having. Having specific customers pay for the specific costs associated with their their area of 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 the system. And that's very common. We're doing that already. If if we have a a water main project in a certain area of town, it's it's shared across all residents on on the system. It's not. Specific to the residents in that in that particular area of the system. There are some benefits to. Reducing these fees to connect into the system. Obviously, it promotes having more people connect on to our systems. That allows system growth. It allows more water and wastewater revenue. I did a quick calculation of. So for an equivalent equivalent residential unit on County Road eighteen. Over the last ten years would have been paying approximately ten thousand dollars in water wastewater rates if we had them on the system ten years ago. So that's foregone revenue that we did not collect because. Because of the cost of connecting into the system. So it's a trade off between having that capital cost initially or bringing in the continual source of funding over. Over over the course of having a property on the water and wastewater systems. So there's system growth, there's additional water and wastewater revenue, and then there are environmental benefits to. Obviously, eliminating the number of private wells and septic systems that that people are using in urban areas. So there's there's a number of benefits to doing this. We're still funding these costs through general water and wastewater rates. We're just making it easier for these properties to connect on to our systems. And this will come up again in the very near future with the St. Andrew Tom work that we're doing near the Summerfields subdivision. in that, uh, there's the potential to extend on to our fees and charges by law to allow properties in that area to, to connect on to our systems as well. So, uh, if this goes through council, the anticipation is that we would communicate this change in fees and charges to all the affected properties and, um, we already know of a few properties that are interested in connecting in, so this should accelerate the project, the process of getting people connected on to our system.
Council Lloyd?
Thank you very much for this forward thinking. Um, you've mentioned Side Road eighteen, but this also qualifies for Side Road nineteen and for Wellington, uh, or for, uh, Victoria. I think it's called Victoria Terrace Crescent, um, up off of Side Road nineteen, those properties as well?
Through Mayor Linton, yes. So, um, so the properties that haven't already connected, um, this, this would apply, um, as well. So we're actually looking at reaching out to those that haven't connected yet and, uh, and kind of promoting, if this gets approved, promoting this new fee structure.
Council Lloyd?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for that follow-up. Um, so we have a number of residents that are living in that area that have paid the higher rates in the past and may have had it added on their tax assessment because they, the cost was too much or those kinds of things. Um, what happens to those residents who have been assessed these higher rates, um, back when they joined in? When the project was going forward on both eighteen and nineteen?
Um, right now, we're proposing that this change is proactive, which means anybody that has already paid does not get a reduction. We'll just apply the, the new fees as of the date of passage of the by-law amendment.
That's Morris?
Dan, I may have missed it in your commentary, but how much are we talking per household and how much potentially are we forfeiting?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to provide an example, um, the, the properties on County Road eighteen, um, I'd say on average, um, under the current structure, so unamended structure, are paying, I'd say would pay approximately twelve to thirteen thousand dollars per property to connect on to, um, the system. What we're suggesting is that be amended so that on average, they're paying about four thousand dollars.
And this is, might be an obvious one to everyone else, but, um, they have to, it's a combo unit. You, you hook up to, uh, waste, you hook up to water, you can't take one or the other?
Um, under, yeah, through, uh, that's a good question. Um, currently, the policy has always been to connect to both. Um, but, uh, you know, we are hearing, um, especially at the, the Tom in St. Andrews neighborhood where, um, you know, maybe a resident really likes to be on their, their private well, uh, but their septic has totally failed. Um, and then there's an affordability issue that I can't afford to connect to both. Um, so I think we're, I, I, again, historically, the township's policy has been to connect to both. Um, but, uh, from staff's perspective at this stage, we're, we're, uh, kind of reconsidering that, um, that position.
That's Morris?
Just a question on, on what you said at the beginning, Dan, that people are finding this unaffordable. Is there, is there a payment plan currently in place and is that payment plan too short? Should we lengthen the payment plan to make the payments more affordable?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we do have a payment plan in place. I believe it's, um, they could put it on their taxes over ten years, uh, but I believe in, in staff speaking to the residents, it's not a question of, uh, payment plan, it's, it's the fact that they could, uh, um, if they're having well issues or septic issues, they can put in a new well or a new septic at a cost much less than, than connecting on to our system.
Council Lloyd?
Thank you. Is it, Dan, how does this work with the, uh, commercial business with the properties, larger properties? Um, you were talking about how many units per household can fit on there, but commercials, completely different animal. Especially when you're speaking about, I'm assuming when we ran sewer water to, uh, Wellington Terrace, that kind of area. There's all these businesses down there, how does that work in that area as well?
Um, I'll attempt to answer that and then get Colin to add to it. Um, with that equivalent residential unit calculation, um, you would first have to determine how many equivalent residential units are on each property. And then that determines the, the, the extent of the fee being charged from a frontage perspective. Um, and that's based on current ERUs. And then if there's more ERUs added to that property in the future, they'd have to continue to pay more of a frontage fee at that point in time. So it's, it's, it's very much based on the current use of the property, um, as translated into equivalent residential units.
Yeah, and I, and I'd also add it's, um, for commercial, it's based on per, per square foot. And so, uh, we've had some discussions, uh, with Rona, who's currently on well and septic. So you can imagine on a pair, per square foot of commercial space basis, um, their, uh, area-wide is, is quite significant. So, uh, so by waiving that, um, it becomes more in line, uh, with, uh, a cost that's close to replacing their well and septic as opposed to, I think we were at about three times the cost for them in terms of replacing their well and septic. So it did, for, for them, it didn't make any sense under this new system. Um, they've indicated to us that it would make sense to move ahead with a connection.
So is it more based on occupancy load, for example, of how many, uh, wash closets and, and how many people can technically be in the building for a working unit?
Exactly. So it's based on not the development potential, but what they are today. So I think they've got maybe one or two washrooms in there. Um, and, and then by waiving the area-wide, um, it, it makes a significant difference for them.
Council Lloyd?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I kind of moved slowly through this process. So, um, the fee that we charge is to connect, but the resident themselves have to pay to get the services from the connection at their house to the spot on. So we just want to make sure that we're saying that for those that are listening.
Yeah, no, that's a great point of clarification. Uh, we are talking about works within the road allowance. So, uh, uh, if a resident does choose to connect, um, they would be responsible to take it from the property line and connect to their internal plumbing. That is their cost, we, we stay right out of that one.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the recommendation. That the Council of Township Center Wynton approve an amendment to the township's fees and charges by law as outlined in report COR two thousand eighteen dash sixteen and that a bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk with respect to the amendment. Have a mover for that recommendation? Council Van Leeuwen, second by? Council, Councilor McQuine, all in favor? That was a close one, now that, that passes. So we have a number of information items. We have the emergency gravel road repair caused by the flooding report. Um, we have a community impact grant funding report. We have the two thousand eighteen municipal election key dates, and, uh, and our clerk wants to speak to that briefly. Uh, then we have the minutes from the Community Services Advisory Committee. We have the minutes from the Economic Development Task Force, and we have the minutes from the Heritage Center Wynton Advisory Committee. We also have our tracking list. So, um, anything on the first two items? Okay, so, uh, Council McQuine?
I'm just curious, I'm assuming just based upon the snowfall this year, that we probably saved some money in snow removal? Could that be assigned to gravel road repair or is they completely kept separate?
Um, indirectly it will be. Um, so the, the surplus in, uh, snow removal will go into the overall surplus of the township. And we'll be bringing forward a report to deal with how we use that surplus and transferring to reserves. And, um, we're using reserves in this case to fund emergency management, so.
Thank you.
Anything else on the first two? Then Carrie's gonna speak briefly to, uh, municipal election key dates. Carrie?
Yes, through you. Uh, there's two that I, I just wanted to highlight, um, for you. The, uh, April twelfth, um, candidate's information session, uh, hosted by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. Um, any, um, sitting counselors or anyone, uh, thinking of running? Uh, this is an important information night. There have been significant changes to the Municipal Elections Act, uh, with respect to financial obligations. What is a contribution? What is an expense? Uh, who can contribute, who cannot? That has, there have been significant changes, and I encourage you to attend the meeting, um, to get it right from the horse's mouth, right from the ministry staff. Uh, the other date that I wanted to bring to your attention is April the nineteenth. Uh, we held this last time back in two thousand and fourteen, Fred Dean is a guest speaker. Um, so you want to be a candidate, he kind of, uh, uh, lays it out for people as to what to expect, um, if you're running for, uh, for municipal government. Roles and responsibilities of candidates, um, and elected officials, um, legislative requirements, those, those sorts of things. He, uh, it's not meant to scare people, it's meant to, um, be informative so that they know what they're getting into.
Thanks, Carrie. Um, any, um, any, anything else on any of the other items there, information items? Council McQuine?
Thanks, Kelly. Um, just briefly, the, um, broadband old, whatever it's called up there. You, used to be Intelligent Community and now something, broadband initiatives. It's been sitting there for about three years with nothing happening. Is there any intent of anything happening or should we just remove it?
Yeah, we've kind of left it there so we don't, um, uh, get rid of it. It was assigned to the task force. And we haven't, and they haven't decided to move ahead on anything related to it, so, um, it's kind of, yeah, the committee hasn't made any action there, so. We, we can, we can remove it if council wishes to remove it. Um, it's kind of just, it's sitting there in limbo.
Given it was my suggestion to begin with, if it is sitting in limbo and intends to stay sitting in limbo, may as well remove it. It isn't moving anywhere. It could, I suppose, be tied into any plans for the Economic Development Task Force as far as planning for creative economy because that's the whole idea behind it to begin with. But, uh, I don't know, I just, as I say, it's been sitting there for three years with nothing happening, so. Um, just one, I was just wondering what the plan was.
Well, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Economic Development Strategy, that's going, uh, the strategic plan that's going forward, um, I would imagine it fits in there. You think that too? Yeah, okay. Council Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question about the, uh, community grant policy review. It says something is coming forward, April twenty eighteen, is that still current and that will be happening? So I was just thinking that's, that will not be coming through the Community Services Advisory Committee, I guess, by that time, or has it already?
No, I believe you spoke about that in the February meeting with regards to reallocation of the, the funding. Yeah.
That comes right here, doesn't go through the committee?
No, the, well, the committee's reviewed it.
Okay.
Because one of the items on this earlier information item was the reallocation of funding to, I think, the Flyfisher Committee or something.
Yeah, that was the one I'm thinking about.
That was the discussion.
Yeah, so this is about the annual specific policy, yeah.
Hit the button.
So, the policy, we just want to change some of the wording. Um, because the additional three thousand dollars was allocated to the committee for, to reallocate, um, there's a statement in the policy that, and I hope I get this correctly, if any, uh, organization or, or people want to come to the department to get their rental fee waived, initially, they're, were to come to council to make a presentation to have the fees waived, and council has sent it back to the committee now to make the decision. So we have to reword the policy so that it's up to the committee and not to council. Does that make sense?
I understand. The only reason I raise it, if, if Community Services has done its work on this and there's something coming forward, that's good. If it, if it hasn't, just looking at April, it's a rather busy committee for April, May, June. It doesn't probably have any more time to do anything else, but if we already done it, then fine, that was the only point I, I was trying to.
It's just, it's just having to tweak that wording, that's the only change really to the report, to the policy. Yes.
Thanks, Dorothy. Council Lloyd?
I believe there was something else in there as well. Some of the organizations have been ongoing receiving annual funding, and it was moving them from filling in an application each year to going into an annual gifting or not gifting, but annual allotment of a community funding. So that, I think that's in there as well, is that right?
Brian asked me to review that, um, the allocation. And yes, we're looking at some of those groups, um, that have come year after year after year and request the same amount of money every year. And we're contemplating and wanting to move those over to the annual specific category versus having them to apply for the impact grant. I've done my homework. We have not had an opportunity to sit down and discuss it, to move it forward.
I guess it just brings it back to my point, just, April twenty eighteen, is that still a realistic time, given all the other things that you have to do?
I would have to say it's not. So I, I don't know what the policy is to move it forward, um, at another date, but given the task at hand with the McDonald funding in, in this committee, I don't know that we'll be ready for that.
Yeah, we'll have to follow up. Brian had the date Brian spoke to at Senior Management Team, so we'll follow up with him when he's back and we'll put a new date in there based on the workload for CSAC.
It's on the top of my pile, for sure, to talk to him about. Thank you.
Council McQuine?
This, you're off the hook for me, Dorothy. Yeah, this is a different topic again, uh, on our, uh, fol, our list. Um, the Blue Dot Program is in the hands of Growth Strateg, Growth Management Strategy Committee. So my question is, what's happening with the Growth Strategy Committee? I, we haven't heard anything from that for a long time and we still haven't approved the Growth Strategy, I don't believe.
Correct. So I know Brett's been, uh, trying to reach out to, uh, have a meeting later this month, early April, with the Growth Strategy Committee, uh, so we can plan the next sex and when we think we can get it back to council, uh, with regards to that and how we're addressing, uh, the feedback that we received over the, um, period of time that it's been out, as well as the October meeting. Uh, and he just had a meeting with Krista last week or the week before to plan that out and, uh, looking to bring forward the str, the str, the implementation committee, the Growth Implementation Committee, uh, for timing as to when we get a meeting and, uh, get that approved and bring it forward to council.
Does it get you?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item's not on here, but, uh, I guess I, I'm asking Andy and Dan, um, when, um, we can see a report about or a facilitation of the, um, I guess profit loss on capital projects. Uh, I was just wondering, I was led to believe that there would, that would be coming soon. And I was wondering when that was gonna happen.
That was a discussion with regards to during the budget process, it was not put on the tracking list. And it wasn't a direction of council, it's just a discussion that we've had. Uh, that's something we continue to talk about and looking how we can discuss that. We've come up with some drafts, um, so we are looking to bring forward something, but, uh, it's just a matter, we haven't finalized as to the timing with everything else, a couple of things that haven't got on the list, uh, to get that in front of council with all the other work that we're doing currently. But we are working on a couple of drafts and hope to bring that forward shortly to council.
That's Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, two things. Um, we initiated, or we struck a citizens committee to look at council remuneration for the next council. Excuse my voice, I don't know what's wrong with it, but it's going. We struck that committee, and I guess my question is- We struck that committee, and I guess my question is, is that committee going to report to committee of the whole or come directly to council? And the second question is, the process for the performance review of the CAO, is that coming to this committee or is that going straight to council as well? And if it's coming to this committee, should that not be on the tracking sheet with a date?
I know with council remuneration, the committee is actually having their first meeting this Friday and working with a consultant, so they'll work through our process. Once we get a better understanding as to timeframe, it will be coming to committee of the whole, the recommendation. As far as CAO, performance appraisal, Sandra and I just began work on that currently. And so we will be setting up meetings and schedules for that over the next month or two.
We want to add it to, I mean, if we want to add that to the tracking sheet, I mean, it's something that's in progress right now. But it makes sense just to add that to the tracking sheet, then we have something to cross off. Council remuneration, the CAO thing, isn't?
The council growth and governance was part of that council remuneration of how we're looking at that growing and full-time, part-time remuneration for the next term of council and beyond. So that's under that one. The CAO one, we're working on it. This is something that we know taking will be longer period of time that we're trying to track and be able to do. But if you want to add it, that's fine with regards to CAO performance, but it is coming forward.
Counsel Kit?
This is my first time in council. Is there a lame duck period in councils that after, you know, certain things can't be brought up or certain things don't, can't happen or whatever?
Through you, the first opportunity for lame duck would, we would determine it as of July 31st, which is the last date for closing of nominations. You could also be lame duck following the October 22nd election, depending on the outcome of that election. Lame duck for us is if six persons are likely not to return. Six, six. It's seventy-five, three quarters, three, two-thirds, or seventy-five, no, seventy-five percent. So the likelihood of that is quite possible. It will know July 27th.
Sounds fun. Lame duck. Such a cool term. Okay, anything else from council? All right, motion adjourned, Counsel Kittriss? Seconded by Counsel McQuine, no favor? And we're adjourned.